Yes.
Your door does come in here.
We're live, we're live.
All right.
I'm gonna call.
Back to order, the North Andover School Committee meeting for November 21st, 2021. We are returning from, I'm sorry, October, thank you. We are returning from executive session with negotiations regarding the North Andover Custodial Association. So we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I want to make this into a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I would just remind everyone to silence their mobile devices if they have them. There were no dial-in or phone requests, correct, Mrs. Picard? I don't see it on the screen.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. And there is no public in attendance today, so we will move on. Is there any recognition that you have, Dr. Gilligan?
I would like to, I was gonna put it in the superintendent's report, but I think it might be appropriate here, just to mention that the Sergeant School today, the ANEEL Sergeant School, had a nice ceremony to recognize the 100th anniversary of the appointment of ANEEL Sergeant as the first female high school principal in North Andover, 100 years ago. So she had an awesome ceremony, you know, she had some reps sending some certificates. We, great beautiful day outside for it. I didn't get a chance to go, I was with MSBA, but I thought it was a really cool event. And I just thank her and her staff. And Karen Klein played a critical role in helping facilitate this, so.
Awesome. All right.
That's nice.
Very good. All right, so let's move on to consent agenda, which would be the approval of the minutes of October 7th, 2021. And I would take a motion, if there is one.
I'd make a motion to accept the minutes from October 7th, 2021, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the minutes? I don't see or hear any, okay? So with that being not said, I guess, we'll take a vote for approval of the minutes for October 7th, 2021. We'll start with you, virtually, Ms. Picard.
Yes.
Ms. Wietzke?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes, and I did go back and watch the parts that I had missed, so.
Okay.
I know that matters.
No problem.
And yes.
You can still vote, you're actually voting that the meeting occurred, not necessarily that.
Okay.
You were there.
Okay.
Some people will abstain in that case, but you're fine to vote either way.
Okay.
Ms. Maybott?
I'm a yes.
And the chair votes yes, so 5-0, we have approved the minutes for October 7th. Perfect. All right. I thought I saw earlier Ethan. I did not see Lindsay, but I could have missed her virtually there. Ethan?
Hello. I did text Lindsay. I don't think she's going to make it tonight, however, we have filled out results for the survey. We made a presentation on all of those, so the school committee is still interested in seeing those. I would be more than willing to present that tonight.
If you're ready to present, we're ready to listen.
All right, wonderful. Let me just sort of get this up and running. It's very confusing to be back on Google Meet after such a long time without it.
I'm glad to see you not getting back to use to it.
I know.
That's a good sign.
It's a strange but great feeling.
Okay.
All right, hopefully I'm doing this correctly. I'm hoping that the slideshow I shared.
You were, yep.
Just about there.
All right, wonderful. Let's see if it has. Let me go to the beginning, not spoil too much of it yet.
Yep.
And so, of course.
Excuse me real quick. Do you wanna just switch to the present mode, just so that we can see it a little bit?
Of course.
Clearly? And if you are presenting this, could you please email this in so that we can attach this to the minutes, please?
All right, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like me to do that right now, or just after I finish?
No, 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 afterwards is fine. Afterwards is fine, and we'll post it afterwards. Thank you.
Great. So a disclaimer first, 247 students total have responded to this survey, and about 71% were freshmen and sophomores. And it is, of course, important to note that these underclassmen were not really introduced to the original trimester system in a normal in-person environment. And because of that, some of the questions that we asked comparing the semester schedule to the trimester schedule might not have exactly the most accurate responses, but Lindsay and I do plan to send out other surveys during the school year on this topic, so we believe that we will eventually have closer results comparing the two systems. And the survey was sent out on October 11th by Mr. Jackson to the entire student body. Of course, we were asked by the school committee to send it out, and we just knew we need to know how the student body felt about this transition, and this is why we included the questions comparing the semester system and the old trimester system, both virtually and in person. And some students, as you will see, might have wanted a little more time to respond, but let me get to what some of the results were. These are the exact numbers of students from each grade who responded to the form. Of course, sophomores and freshmen by far the most, and seniors made up about 13% of the response to the form. And so we're hoping that in any future surveys or any future extensions on survey times, that we'll have a lot more upperclassmen representation, especially since upperclassmen do know how the previous schedule went. First, we wanted to start with some senior privilege feedback, just to cover that. We understand that it is nothing that is entirely new to the semester schedule, however, it is still a relatively new thing, and it is something that has sort of changed with the new schedule. We have three samples of negative feedback and two positive feedback here that seniors gave in. Some seniors said it was a little confusing schedule-wise, especially on certain drop days, like a day one or a day seven, where they might not have senior privilege, as well as the collaboration and advisory days, and getting used to the timing of senior privilege on those two days. In addition, senior students talked about how doors were locked when they got there early in the morning after period one, and how this was a problem to have to get someone to open the doors for them, and having to worry about being late to their second period class. And the final negative feedback we have had with several seniors is there might be a timing mishap with clubs. Some clubs meet at 7:15, 7:20 in the morning, and this is before period one. And although this is more of a club-specific concern, many of these clubs don't meet virtually, so senior students are kind of concerned that they'll have to miss the benefits of senior privilege and come in much earlier where they would have wanted extra sleep. However, of course, there is much more positive feedback than negative feedback in response to senior privilege. Of course, it's great for students with siblings who need to take their siblings to North Andover Middle School, and the senior privilege helps them plan out their schedule for the day. And for students living far away, they no longer need to get up as early or arrive as late as they used to without having senior privilege. And finally, of course, there is the biggest positive feedback that allows seniors to either leave school early or sleep in. And most of our responses, although it isn't detailed here, were about that, about how it's just great in general to be able to have a break and not have to have seven classes. So that is what we had on senior privilege. And we had some responses on specifically the concept of drop days, having six different classes per day. The major concern we had with drop days was just mainly concern of confusion. Now, while we believe that many students just need more time to assemble to the schedule because most of the complaints were, hey, we haven't gotten used to this yet, it would be very beneficial to check in with students later in the school year to see if they have adjusted, and if this is something that students will be able to adjust to. However, some of the positive feedback was that it was a very good concept, and that it was nice for homework for certain classes, that homework wasn't due necessarily the next day. It was nice to get a break from certain classes that would be stressful every day. It makes some days feel more manageable, and it's actually a little better of a switch-up. But of course, there were some criticisms with dropping the periods, and honestly, the criticisms and the praise for dropping periods was pretty even in number between students, with some students saying they wish they had less classes in general, and of course, that quote down there, "I wish we dropped two." Some students just wishing generally for more dropped classes. And some students said that they felt it limited class progress, whereas in the past, if you had a full year, such as like a full-year AP class that you would have every day, now you don't necessarily have that class every single day. And while yes for some electives in some classes, the time goes on longer to learn for those. Some AP classes and some just general full-year classes are limited in the time they have to learn inside the classroom, and that is something more upperclassmen said of dropping periods. And some students overall were just kind of fine with it, didn't have much of a strong opinion at all. And we wanted to detail some major benefits of the schedule in general. Of course, this was more time mainly for elective classes, but of course, it is important to note that on the flip side, some people did say it limited time for certain classes. There is a lot more room in the schedule, seems to be a common point of praise for the switch, where students did not have room for certain electives or core classes, they now have that room in order to be able to take the classes they do want. So that is, of course, a very good thing. And a lot of students are happy that it seems, there seems to be a lot more time to improve grades with the semester system. However, it is important to note, and this will come up again later in this presentation, that many students are also confused about how quarters and semesters work within this new schedule. And finally, before getting into some specific statistics, I wanted to show some student ideas on improvements. Some of the main ones are just grading by semester, and this, of course, comes out of a point of confusion about the quarters and semesters. And students were saying that capturing grade quarterly in order for colleges and people to see is very similar to having trimesters, in that there isn't a lot of time before feedback is received. Of course, there was the suggestion of being able to drop classes when you wanted to switch a teacher or switch a class or something. Many students believed that it might not be as fluid to be able to switch out of a class if needed, and many students were confused if that was still able to be a thing, like if it was as easy to switch out of a certain class if they did not want to take it any longer. And finally, another major point or of an idea on an improvement is having the waterfall schedule. So having seven classes still, but instead of having period one every day and period seven at the end of every day, it would still waterfall as the previous trimester schedule did. And some students believe this was just better for getting a variety within their classes. And the first question, so we asked a few questions on comparing the semester schedule and the old trimester system. And of course, it is very important to point out again that many of the responses to this form were from students who had not experienced the old trimester system, but from the results as they are now, many of the students say that the systems don't seem that different in terms of preference, and the rest of the responses seem pretty evenly split between a preference for semesters and trimesters, although, as you can see, there were more responses saying semesters are better than there are saying trimesters are better. And of course, this just summarizes the data that I just talked about. And the second question that we asked relating the semester schedule to the trimester schedule is about how much easier it is to get schoolwork done, with the majority of students saying that it doesn't have a major effect one way or the other in getting schoolwork done. And the rest of the responses, again, are pretty evenly split between either saying it's easier to get semester schedule work done, or harder to get semester schedule work done, with slightly more students saying it's a little easier to get work done under the semester schedule. And the final question that we asked specifically comparing the semester schedule with the trimester schedule was just how stress has either improved or not improved relating with the schedule. And unfortunately, it seems this was also a pretty evenly split question. However, of course, it's very important to note on the stress-related question that more students said that the semester schedule is generally a little less stressful than the old trimester system used to be. In review, this data is, might not be as helpful as we would have wished, considering many of the students who responded to it had not experienced the full in-person trimester system previously, and so might not have had a good, like North Andover High School experience trimester system off of. Many complaints against the semester schedule are as follows. The semesters seem to be very long, and they can get kind of boring if students don't have a lot of variety with teachers, classes, and times of day in which classes are taken. The schedule can be confusing with drop days, and students are uncertain if they will be able to adjust to this new schedule. The lunch schedule is confusing in general, whether it be part of the trimester system or the semester schedule. And again, having same teacher in class could not be great for variety. And there is a lot of confusion in general about certain significance of quarter grades, whether students can switch out of certain classes, and how long they'll have to adjust. There's even confusion whether the semester schedule is a permanent thing or not. And just to talk about senior privilege briefly one more time, most seniors did say they enjoyed senior privilege. Most of the suggestions were not as much criticisms as they were suggestions in improving it. The vast majority, as in practically all of the seniors who responded, said that they enjoyed senior privilege and thought it was something that should most certainly stay. And one more time, because Lindsay and I believed the most important thing that could come out of this survey is addressing students' confusions in the future. The major confusions of students were whether quarter grades affected your GPA, what their significance was, whether colleges would be able to see them, whether the grades reset in each quarter, or whether they were still based off of quarter one, even if you were grading in quarter two. Students seemed confused about being able to switch out of full-year classes. Could they switch to a different teacher when the school year had already started? What was a cutoff date for switching classes, if there was one? Many students are struggling with understanding the drop day system and how that relates to advisory and collaboration day schedules as well. And finally, some of the students believe that having more time of the schedule could still give them a stronger opinion on some topics. A lot of the responses in certain questions were, I don't really know about this question, I don't really know how to compare the semester system to the old trimester system because we haven't had a lot of time yet. And this is a theme that is not only constant with the freshmen and sophomores, but is also carried over into the juniors and seniors as well. It seems that many students do want a little more time to be able to adjust, not only to the schedule, but just in their general understanding of the system. And this is the end of the presentation Lindsay and I had prepared. Are there any questions on this presentation?
Wow, that's great. Thank you very much. Let's start with Ms. Picard.
I first want to thank you so much. What a great, what a great tool you used, and that's such a terrific amount of feedback, and I'm sure that the high school leadership will be able to address some of the confusion. And as you say, as we, as we practice something, it becomes less confusing to us. And with a seven days, it's a seven-day schedule, right?
Yes, with advisory and collaboration days every Wednesday, sort of offsetting it every once in a while.
Yeah, so you've really not gone through that seven-day cycle really all that often, because we've only been in school, I mean, it's like seven weeks, right? So maybe you've gone through it. So my question, so thank you very much. It's tremendous, and I appreciate that you, that you took our request and really produced a significant body of work. My two questions are, one, when you give the feedback on whether the semester was better or the trimester was better, one of them said way better, and one of them said better. So that's a qualitative, and I don't know if that qualitative came from the survey results, like was there like a scale way better versus better, or if that's just the reporting out that we did?
Oh, to answer that question right now, the responses were just the ones that were enlisted in the pie chart. There was no like, oh, semesters are way better, or semesters are just kind of better. It was mainly just meant to be a response for semesters are better, trimesters are better, and they're about equal. So there are no other responses, like there's no real scale. It's just picking one or the other, or they're equal.
Terrific. You might want to adjust your labels on your chart, because one of them said way better, and one of them just said better. But very good, very helpful. And then I understand the feedback from the seniors about senior privilege, and I don't see any feedback, and wonder if you've heard anything, either in the survey or anecdotally, on feedback for study periods. I know some students have guided study time that would be separate from senior privilege, like so if I were, you know, a freshman or sophomore who had six classes rather than seven classes, I might be in a guided study. So I'm wondering if there was any feedback from that, and if there's not, if maybe that can be part of the next follow-up survey.
So honestly, guided study feedback was not a question implemented into the survey. Anecdotally, I have not heard too much about guided study, although the questions designed for workload were meant to sort of address every student's perspective. I do agree that it is important to, well, you, sorry, you asked the question, you didn't say it was important. I personally think it would be important to add that guided study question in the future.
And is there any kind of other, is there an unguided study, or is there a free block that is neither guided study nor senior privilege?
I, I would like to make sure that before we would send out another survey, that I asked to make sure I'm covering them all, but I know there, of course, senior privilege, guided study, I believe academic support is still in place, if that is not already just transformed into guided study. I also know some seniors and maybe some juniors, although I think it might just be open to seniors, are lab aids for certain science teachers, where they help out a science teacher during a certain block instead of having a set class there. I believe, other than that, there are some independent studies, although I believe most of those are conducted outside of school, in case a student can't fit all of their classes that they'd like into one semester.
Terrific.
Although I will ask to make sure I'm getting all of the ones that might have a student dropping a class.
So helpful, thank you so much. And then one of the things that we hoped was that the schedule would provide for students to do outside coursework or dual enrollment, and I don't think that was part of this survey, but perhaps we could find out at some point, either from the high school leadership or from a follow-up survey, if students are able to engage with the community, either in dual enrollment, or, you know, some sort of community service or other activities with their senior study, excuse me, their senior privilege, or even younger students who might be able to use that flexible time. So thank you so much, Ethan, and Chair McDevitt, I am done for now.
All right, thank you. Ms. Wietzke?
Yeah, my only question regards the drop days. Is there an order to them? I assume like it's one, and then two, and then three? Is that accurate?
Oh, very sorry, could you please repeat that?
So the drop days, is there a specific preset order to it? So it's logical, like first day is one, the second day is two, and all that?
That's, that's actually exactly it, where each day's number corresponds to that day being dropped. Advisory and collab days don't have any of the periods being dropped, and instead have the periods being shorter to either accommodate for collaboration being on that day or advisory. But yes, like for example, with a day five, you would drop period five, and with a day four, you would drop a period four.
Okay.
So.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I believe that's also, oh, sorry, I believe that's also in the schedule on Power School for students to look at.
So they have ample opportunities to figure out when the drop days are. It's probably announced, too, I would assume, in the morning. Okay, thanks.
Well, sorry, it's not announced in the morning what day it is, although it might be beneficial to do so in the future.
Good suggestion. Ms. Petrowski?
I have a couple of thoughts or questions. First of all, this is a really amazing presentation, so thank you for all the work that you did. And I'm, as the new person, wondering, is this type of survey, is this new this year, or have we done this in the past? And I'm just wondering, because I feel like this is a really great opportunity to engage our student population about how they're feeling, right? We're all worried about our social-emotional well-being of our students, and this is like a really great way to have their voices heard. They had some really great constructive feedback, I'm so impressed with all of it. So I would love to see this happen like twice a year, like why not, right? Like this is, this is great information. So is this, is it new, or is it something that?
Yeah, I can answer that. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Gilligan, I think this is maybe the second time we've really had our student representatives conduct a survey and then present the results back to us. I remember.
I think they've done a few over the years, but I think it's more at the, you know, the student council level and with the principal.
Not necessarily with us.
Yeah, I just, I just think it's such, it's such valuable feedback, you know? And again, it's like one of those things where things may start off a little bit slow. We had, you know, mostly the underclassmen participating, so that, like you said, the information's not quite as accurate as it could be, but even still, the information coming back is really good feedback. Like I was impressed with the suggestion of the waterfall schedule. When I think of high school and that, that's how I, in my mind, that's what I think, and I think there's a lot of value to a waterfall schedule. I'm a very big fan of them. So I guess I don't really have questions, I just, I would be interested to see the feedback from the upperclassmen, and then to see this as like a regular part of the routine of the school year, just because, I mean, we're here, the students are what we're here for, and why not listen to them right away, right? Why not get their feedback? I think it's great.
I can't speak for Lindsay on that matter, but I would like to say that I would also be interested in making this slightly more routine, especially since that would provide more data points throughout the year and more opportunities for students to offer what they think.
Yeah.
While you're in the presentation, Lindsay and I did note that we were planning on making another survey or two later throughout the year, but it might be even better to have, like, maybe even once a month, for students to be able to chime in, and for every student to have ample opportunity to voice their thoughts on the subject, and to sort of see how the comments evolve and change over the year.
Absolutely. And if they know that it's being brought to the school committee, like their voices are being heard and listened to, that, I feel like they'll be a little bit more buying, so. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Maybott?
Sure, thank you. Outstanding. A couple of questions, and I don't know if you could answer it now, but specifically around the transcript and the quarters and the grades, I'd be curious to know if you are able to see if that's tied directly to seniors, because I can remember from having a senior during the trimester system two years ago, it was equally confusing then, because the way colleges are asking for data to be reported, they want the data in time for your application, right? If your application's November 1st, they get the most recent transcripts, so it's never a full semester's worth of data. So I'd be curious to know if the major part of that confusion about grades is coming from seniors. Obviously, the drop and switch thing about the semester is a different question, and I think that's probably across the board, but I'd be curious to know about that. And you don't have to answer it now. Related to the waterfall schedule, what Ms. Petrowski just mentioned, and you guys brought up too, one of the main reasons that I believe they had it, that it's always in the same order every day, was so that the last block of the day could be used for leaving campus to do volunteer work or what have you. So it'd be interesting to know, and I don't think we could base it on year one, but is that being taken advantage of? Is that being used? And if it's not, then maybe it invites an opportunity to do something differently. I think those were my key things. Oh, and I would.
Please excuse me. We on the call are no longer hearing what's happening in the room. I left the call and came back and thought perhaps it was supposed to me, but now I see in the chat that others who are here on the call are not hearing the room.
Is it since we closed off the presentation, or you can't hear us?
I can hear you now that you said the last sentence.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a little log off and off. I saw it kind of blip.
Right, and Nikki's saying the same thing, so.
Are we back on?
Helen can hear us now, she said, right?
Yeah, I think everyone can hear you.
Oh, so can Nikki, okay.
Okay.
And Cheryl, hopefully, as well. So yeah, so my last comment for you, Ethan, it sounds like you're already wanting to do it. I would love to see, almost, you know, with some tweaks, the same questionnaire given maybe in March, when people have a lot more opportunity to experience this, to see how they feel then, and hopefully, you know, before the seniors are totally done, that they will be able to want to give that kind of feedback, because I mean, I would understand after March, they're gonna be totally done. Because I would imagine, I don't know if you can remember when you were a ninth grader, but was even the trimester schedule at high school confusing when you were first in ninth grade, because of the lunches and all that, or was it similar enough to the middle school, if you remember?
So I'm actually kind of a special case. I came from St. Michael's School, so I had an entirely different sort of experience.
Fair enough.
Exactly. I'm sure if Lindsay were here, she could speak a lot more to that, but for me personally, coming from a non-name school, it certainly was confusing at first, although I found after a week or two, it was a little easier to adjust.
Right.
Going back to what you first said about if most of these responses were coming from the seniors, I believe the response is talking about the semester schedule being I believe the response is talking about the semester schedule being generally confusing. We're coming from students from across all grades. And of course, I can't really say whether, judging from the different sort of student response sizes by class, I'm not exactly sure what percentage of students per class believe it's confusing. But hopefully, future surveys and hopefully more responses will be able to shed a little more light on that.
That's, that's great. I, I was just speculating because I know that seniors are very focused on like the cutoff on grades for, for obviously, obvious reasons for the application. So I didn't know if it came from them. But there is enough confusion, it sounds like, from other areas as well, that it doesn't hurt to clarify the, especially the drop ad second semester for a full year course. So, thank you. Outstanding work, guys. And thank Lindsay too.
Excuse me. All right, Ethan, just a couple of quick thoughts. First of all, great presentation tonight. I think, first time you've done a survey. First time I think you've had something kind of presentable. I mean, I think you guys have always done a great job in terms of talking about what's going on. But loved it. You did a great job with all of that. I think a couple of things, I mean, we are about six or so weeks in. So there's definitely some different things that, that students are kind of learning and getting used to. Not to mention coming back into school five days a week, right? So that, like, there's that as well. Mrs. Maybly mentioned perhaps doing this again in the springtime, kind of specific to this. I might suggest a little bit closer to the end of the semester when that changes over because I think it'll be a little bit fresher in people's minds. I have heard some things about lunches being a little bit confusing, especially because they do drop and different classes drop. I think you mentioned a little bit in terms of grades. One thing that I think is interesting as well as I've heard, I'm not sure if this is right, that your GPA changes at the end of a semester unless it's an AP class and then that changes at the end of the year. And I think that that's an important thing for us to get some clarification on from perhaps guidance because there are a quarter of our students who are, you know, applying to colleges at this point in time. So I do think that that, you know, was definitely good. I think the question that you asked in terms of dropping that class, you know, is really about how students can, can then kind of get out into the community at the end of the day, whether it's for work or siblings or internships or, you know, dual enrollment. It may be right now, Ethan, and I'm just thinking, I don't know, perhaps you can percolate on it a little bit. But I don't know how many students really realized what that meant as they started the school year. And so I'd be curious to know if like five students take advantage of it this year and next year because people are aware of it, if that grows from there as well. So I think how we communicate that out is, is really important. But, and the last thing that I just want to say is this is extremely valuable. You know, we made a major change in how the high school operates. And this is really important feedback, I think, for all of us. So thank you so much for doing this. And I do surveys and things of that nature and it's hard to kind of take that data and kind of make sure that you're looking at it as objectively as possible. And then, you know, I, I think you did a great job. The only thing I would say is, you know, we, we had about sixty, negative, I would say, about sixty, maybe seventy students who are upperclassmen who participated. And any thoughts on how we can get those students to complete this at a higher percentage?
So just to start off my answer to this question, the way we sort of advertised this survey was we talked about it over the announcements and we talked about how it would be presented at school committee and that it would be important for any future improvements or alterations to the new schedule. And Mr. Jackson did send it out in an email to the whole student body and an email tailored specifically for it. It is my, my belief that no matter what, we're not going to get all students to respond to the survey. But I think maybe we could have announced it maybe a couple more times over the loudspeaker. Maybe if we had had advisors promote the survey. Personally, I was not in advisory on the thirteenth, so I can't really attest to how much it was talked about there. But if it was not, I believe that might be a good way to promote it. However, I do believe that it won't be answered by everybody, but I do agree it's important for upperclassmen, especially since they can compare the systems. And sorry, just to respond to what you said a little bit earlier about, I, I believe it was about how senior privilege can be used to aid in community service hours and interacting with the community, correct?
Yeah, yes.
All right. Being completely honest, anecdotally, what I've heard is people generally use it to sleep in. For period one at least, many period one kids just use it as that sort of opportunity. And for most period seven kids, I believe if they have work, they do go to that. But I have not much heard of kids making it more time for community service. Unfortunately, I've heard it a lot more being used for personal relaxation, which is still important in this. You know, this time.
That's something that might evolve.
Can I say something?
Yeah, sure.
Ethan, awesome job. Awesome. And I want to say what's really interesting is I'm so glad day one's drop one because I taught in the same schedule 20 years ago as a high school teacher. And day one was subtracted from seven, so that made day six. So I never understood, whatever day it was, was subtracted from seven. And if you think this is, would be confusing. But this is awesome data and I think it's, change is really hard. Like the waterfall, like, you know, trying to have something at the end of the day, I think will grow the opportunity. Like, we used to have a lot more kids work when we had community service years ago at the end in our elementary schools with kids and do different things there and other people had internships. So it's exciting, but I'd be really interested to see because I think any type of change is really hard. And when we went to the trimester schedule, I can remember sitting, not here, but somewhere. And it was equally as hard, so keep plugging along and keep working with Mr. Jackson. But I'd love to see something after the first, like, semester where people have it under their belt and know more. Because I think it's, you know, on a seven-day cycle, that's what, we're just into it for a little bit now. And what I was thinking about, because we're going to talk about SEL next in the Superintendent's Report, is, you know, if you were in eighth grade today, or if you were in, you know, eighth grade today, the last normal school year you had for a full year was fifth grade. So there's some big changes for everyone, not in just schedule, but, you know, getting up in the morning, going to bed at night, all the different things. So awesome work though.
All right. Anything else, Ethan?
Yes, I also do have a student report for tonight. Of course, if we have time for that.
Absolutely.
Last Thursday, the foreign language honor societies, the French, German and Spanish honor societies held their inductions for all of their new senior members. Student council has created and is still currently adding clubs to a club wall within North Edinburgh High School. So students can, not, not only freshmen, all students can learn more about the different sort of clubs North Edinburgh High School offers. Seniors are preparing to apply to certain colleges under early action and early decisions. So that's great and stressful for all of us who are doing that. Of course, the first quarter of the school year is entering its final few weeks. Freshman elections have been postponed for the time being from October thirteenth to an undisclosed date. And the vaccine clinic for Pfizer has given its first dose on October thirteenth, which was a Wednesday, to North Edinburgh High School and North Edinburgh Middle School students above the age of 12 and is set to give the second dose to all of these students on Wednesday, November third. The senior night for the North Edinburgh Music Association is Friday, October 29th. And tonight for sports, the varsity and junior varsity boys soccer teams are competing against the Chelmsford High Team at North Edinburgh High School. And the varsity and junior varsity girls soccer teams are having matches against Haverhill High School at Haverhill High School. In other news, the North Edinburgh High School Model United Nations has their first scrimmage of the year, which also happens to be their first event of the year in November on Friday, the 19th and Sunday, the 20th at UMass Lowell. And finally, although these two events are kind of a far way away, eighth grade night for North Edinburgh High School is set for Wednesday, November 17th. And there is also a robotics competition at the high school on Saturday, November 20th. And that is all that I have prepared for the student reports night. Thank you.
Awesome. Great job.
Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any questions, Ms. Picard?
All set. Thank you again.
All right. Any from the room? All right. Awesome. Great job, Ethan. Go get your applications in.
Thank you very much.
All right.
See you next time.
All right. We will now move over to you, Dr. Gilligan.
All right. Well, speaking about social emotional learning, we have with us tonight Director of Social Emotional Learning, Nikki Murphy. And I think this is a very timely presentation tonight and the work that we're doing. You know, when I was thinking about the changes of coming back this year, you know, I was thinking, one of the most stressful hours of the day, it's the first hour of the day and the last hour of the day. You know, getting up in the morning and kids, you know, probably Ms. Petrowski as a teacher could attest, it's probably a lot easier to wake up 10 minutes before a class than to have to get on a bus at 7:15 and have the stamina to go throughout the course of a day and have regular classes. And I think it was a big change for folks like who went back to the office too, like in the, you know, in the business world. And so it's a long day with the academics. And for a lot of our kids too, you know, since March of 2020 that stayed in the Ola, they didn't have a lot of social interaction. So that was a real challenge as well. And so, you know, it's, it's just a, back to more of a normal year, but I think it's also very stressful. And I think we're seeing across the United States and across Massachusetts and locally, it manifests itself in different ways. So I'm thrilled to have Nikki here tonight. And just before Nikki gets started with the SEL presentation, I just want to plug the North Edinburgh Parent Resource Network. They, Lisa Roberts is a volunteer heading it up this year. She came to the PTO president's meeting today and did a tremendous job. You know, she's been working with us, we've been working with the youth center. We were able to put on angst and it was the most well-attended event we've had since Dr. Englander a long time ago. So just really important, particularly in this time. And I am going to turn it over to our Director of Social Emotional Learning, Nikki Murphy. Nikki Murphy.
There we go. I was on mute. Taken me about two years. I still can't figure out how to unmute myself. Thank you, Dr. Gilligan, and thank you to the committee for giving me the opportunity to speak briefly tonight about the really hard work of the social emotional learning department that we've been able to do so far this year. I know we're only six, seven weeks in, but we're focused on, on really trying to do everything we can to support the social emotional and mental health needs of our kids. Oh, thanks, Jim. So Jim's going to move me along here. All right. So a few buckets here that we're looking at. These are sort of our primary areas of focus and we're obviously doing a lot more work, but this is what we want to focus on this year. So data management, mental health, attendance and caregiver engagement. And you can go to the next one, Jim. Thank you. So starting off with data, because data, of course, drives our decision-making around SEL programming like it drives our decision-making around all things academic, we really do need to have an effective, an efficient data management system in place. So I, I believe I presented a little bit on this at the end of last school year, that we were starting to put the SEL data dashboard into place. And we're in the early stages of it. We did some work over the summer, continuing to do work this fall. And, and on there is some data that we already have in place and that's attendance data. And I'll get into more about, about that in a minute. And then we're going to be adding the youth risk behavior survey data from the high school because we did readminister that. Cheryl had set up, her department had set up. That was readministered in the spring of 2021. The data we want to add to the SEL data dashboard from the youth risk behavior survey is just going to be the mental health data that comes out of that, which is around depression, suicide and some overall mental health questions that are on that, that screener. And so, let's see, we are going to be looking at a lot of different ways to address mental health. The first way we're looking at it is professional development for staff and some different programming for students and then some partnerships with caregivers. So I just want to go through some of the things that we've done so far. Obviously, you know that we've, we've hired three additional counselors this year, one at the middle school, one at the high school and one that's at the Atkinson School. And that was based again on data for the amount of the universal mental health screening that we did last year where we saw higher numbers of depression, anxiety in kids in those specific schools. And that was part of, part of what drove our decision-making to place those counselors in those schools. Angst, as Dr. Gilligan mentioned, was how we kicked off the school year. We did a viewing of that movie, which is about anxiety for all staff throughout the district. The follow-up to that is going to be some school-specific professional development that I'll provide a lot of with teachers around strategies they can use in the classroom. Because angst gives kind of a broad overview of anxiety, what it looks like in kids, how to support them, but it doesn't get too, too deeply into strategy. Another thing that we're doing is we're bringing something called the NAMN project to the district. So they actually presented yesterday to the middle school and that was staff professional development. And basically what they talked about with the NAMM staff was a little bit about how to identify depression in kids. And then also they talked a little bit about how to be a trusted adult, how to help kids as they transition back into five days in-person schooling, kids with anxiety. So kind of covered the gamut of a lot of different mental health issues we're seeing with the kids. The NAMN project is, just so you know, the reason we're focused on that depression piece is again, the youth risk behavior survey results from last year showed at the high school, this high school level, but showed high levels of kids reporting depression, suicidal ideation and plan. And so we thought it was really important to bring this group in and not just have them present to the high school, which they're going to be doing in December, but to, to also present to middle school staff. Because as most of you know, depression and other mental health struggles don't just start in high school. We often see them begin to really present with students at the middle school level. So we thought that was important to, to expand to NAMMs. At the high school level, when they, when the NAMN project comes to present to the staff in December, they're going to also present on something called QPR. Now, QPR stands for question, persuade, refer. It's an evidence-based suicide protocol specifically for educators. Does not expect them to do anything clinical. It just allows them to learn about what depression in students looks like and what exactly they can do as educators in order to support those students and help them get the resources that they need. And it's a lot about partnering with, with counselors. We're also bringing in the YWCA. So one of the goals from the Healthy Relationship Coalition that we started a couple of years ago was we were bringing in, and again, this is also in response to data that came out of the youth risk behavior survey. There were, there was some concerning data about peer relationships and healthy relationships and unhealthy relationships and kids not really recognizing when they were in an unhealthy relationship and/or how to get out of one. And so we brought in the YWCA who taught, they piloted their healthy relationship curriculum at the high school to the 12th graders. We have expanded that this year where they're coming in and they're going to teach that curriculum to ninth graders. And we also expanded it to NAMMs where they're going to teach that curriculum in wellness classes at the middle school to seventh graders. So that was one of the goals of the Healthy Relationship Coalition, was to expand some of this work into the middle school. And we have now done that. I've got everything in place. The principals are ready to go and, and we're excited about that. Another thing the NAMN project's going to do that's student-specific, so we're talking about, you know, professional development for staff, but there's also this, of course, we want to educate students and, and help them understand, you know, how to recognize depression in themselves or in others and how to recognize when they're in an unhealthy relationship. Both the NAMN project and the YWCA, they do things called peer presentations for students. And they're going to be integrating into wellness classes where they have, we call them peers. They're, they're young people. They're like in their early twenties. And they are people who have overcome depression, anxiety, trauma. So they're really hopeful, positive comeback stories that they share with the kids. And they also share how teachers in schools were some of the people they turned to that helped them. And so we're trying to help kids who we know from the data we've gotten from both universal screeners, which I'll speak about in a moment, and the youth risk behavior survey data. We know kids are suffering with anxiety, with trauma, with depression. And we want to make sure we aren't just giving professional development to staff for them to be able to identify, you know, kids that are struggling with these mental health issues, but also that the kids themselves know what to do, how to help a friend if a friend shares with them that they're struggling. We brought in yesterday. We brought in, yesterday, we had a group called Minding Your Mind with a clinician named Linda Price, who did a presentation to all of the staff throughout the elementary schools, specifically focused on challenging behaviors in the classroom and how strategies that teachers could use to help with those situations. So that was, it was very well received. I actually just put a survey out today and got a bunch of responses back. Lots of great strategies that were shared. And what's important about her presentation is it wasn't focused on the etiology of the behavior. So we see behaviors in kids, you know, at all ages. And it, sometimes people get focused on, well, it's about anxiety or it's about, you know, something else. It doesn't really matter if the behaviors are necessarily for the purpose of her presentation. It didn't really matter if the etiology of the behavior is anxiety, underlying depression, trauma, family situation, something COVID-related. It's more about here are the behaviors and here are some specific strategies in the classroom that you can use. It was very educator-focused and we got some really good feedback from teachers that they thought it was extremely helpful. For several years, we have been working with Family Services of Merrimack Valley. Not only do we partner with them where they send clinicians into the schools to provide mental health services for kids in the school setting, but they have been working on trying to obtain a grant to partner with us. And they did receive it finally this year, which is awesome. And that grant that they received, and I just spoke with them this past week, is to provide what's called Youth Mental Health First Aid. So that's what that acronym is. I know I've got a ton of acronyms in here, but I can't fit all the words on here. So I'm trying to say what every acronym is and explain it. So please ask me questions if you have any. But Youth Mental Health First Aid, I'm actually a certified trainer in that as well. It's a phenomenal program, again, educator-specific. And we have this grant with them now to roll this out over five years where they have to educate, not just in North Andover, but with some other districts as well, a certain amount of people, actually 1,500 staff across several districts in different towns in this program. And what's great about it is it is very comprehensive. It's a day-long training for staff. So it is, it's a lot. However, it really helps staff. And again, it's very educator-focused. It's not trying to turn teachers into clinicians, but it allows them to really feel very empowered because they get so much knowledge on these are what mental health symptoms in children look like and here's how to intervene. Here are some strategies. Here's how to communicate effectively with them so they don't escalate. Here's how to help educate them in different ways because they might need it if they're suffering from different mental health disorders or, you know, challenges. So that's something else. Dr. Gilligan mentioned the partnership with Naprin, with PRN. I think what's great about that, and Lisa Roberts has been phenomenal in really spearheading that, is as a district, we're partnering with them as part of our family engagement work and trying to really reach out because they came to me last spring and said, "We have a ton of parents really worried about increase in mental health issues with their kids and we want to get this group going again and we really want a lot of the focus of the parents, the speakers for the parents to be around mental health topics." So they got the angst one, which as Dr. Gilligan said, was, you know, extremely well-attended. We had 40 parents that came. And what we're also doing are some follow-up, things called Coffee and Conversation once a month. And what that looks like is very informal. Any and all parents are welcome to join us. Sometimes we do it virtually, sometimes in person. And I attend all of those and I'm attending them as, working somewhat as a consultant because as most of you know, it's incredibly difficult for parents to find providers, to find therapists to provide treatment for their kids that are struggling. And so even though I'm acting as Director of Social Emotional Learning, not as a psychotherapist in those meetings, it's a chance for them to get connected to someone who can offer them some consultation and some support and resources. And so PRN also has a phenomenal website as well that's great and good to check out. DESI has also been doing a lot of social emotional learning and mental health PD that we've shared with staff. And we're running some anxiety groups for kids. That's something else we're doing for kids to make sure that they are getting the support they need because anxiety still seems to be the number one kind of issue that we're seeing. You can go to the next one, Jim. Thanks. That's the longest slide, I promise. We are also looking at attendance. So the Department of Education created this acceleration roadmap. And over the summer, when the leadership team met, we were looking at the acceleration roadmap and we were breaking out into different groups. And one of the, the group that I was in was working on basically attendance. But it's working on a lot of things, which is, you know, connecting with families and bringing students together and families together to feel like they have a sense of belonging in the school setting. And one of the issues we knew we'd be dealing with as people transition back to school full-time were attendance issues and engagement in the learning process. So using a, sort of a guide, is this playbook called Attendance Works from Attendance Works. And it gave us really a very good framework for how to work with families and how to work internally to help kids who are struggling to attend, coming back to school full-time. Let me take a look at what else I want to say about this. So what I did was I did a training for the SEL Department staff around attendance, around the roadmap, around what it is exactly we wanted to do, what our goals were. And they're actually using as their SMART goals, both an attendance goal and a data collection goal. Because those are two areas that we feel like this year really need to be focused on. SEL in general is one of those sort of fields where data collection and data analysis is, we're sort of still figuring all of that out. And so we're trying to improve our data collection and analysis procedures. But specifically, we're focused on collecting that attendance data. So after I met with the SEL Department and did that training, I then met with all of the principals in each of the schools and the counseling staff in each of the schools. And essentially what we did was the SEL data dashboard, even though it's in the early stages, we have up there right now all of the attendance data from last year. So we're able to look at and see who were the kids that fell into how DESI defines chronic absenteeism, which is missing 10% or more of the school year. And then we created another, another group called At Risk. And those are the kids that are, they don't fall yet into chronic absenteeism, but they are at risk for chronic absenteeism. And so on the SEL data dashboard, we have all of that information. And so what I did was I pushed it out to the schools, just to the principals and the counselors, and then met with each of them individually to discuss, how are we going to tackle this issue this year? And hit it right out of the gate so that we don't wait, you know, three weeks, six weeks into school and see that we've got kids that are still missing a lot of school and not re-engaged in the school day. So we are working on creating district-wide protocols. Now, we already have district-wide protocols for, obviously, for working with kids that are struggling with attending school. However, what we're doing in each of the schools now to, is basically trying to improve those protocols, tighten up the timelines, bring the principals in earlier when a family, when a child is missing several days of school in a row. And the reason this falls under SEL, as most of you know, is that a lot of kids that miss school, miss school because of social, emotional reasons. They miss school because of anxiety. They miss schools because they're traumatized, they're struggling or their families are. There's mental health issues or substance issues in the family. So they're struggling to get them to school. And so this really is a social, emotional issue at its core. Not that there aren't other things that play into why kids miss school, but it's a big one for social, emotional. And you can go to the next one, Jim, please. I think I got one more on there. Is that it?
Yep.
Oh, there we go. That's it. Okay. So one other thing I do want to say about, about the Parent Resource Network that I think is important that I didn't mention is, in addition to the amazing work that Lisa Roberts and the entire group have done, besides the angst viewing, we also did, we also have another one set up and I believe it's in November with the Clinical Director from Walden, and that's on eating disorders. And the other thing that I want to say is that we are fundraising, but I do want to say thank you very much to the Youth Center, specifically to Rick Gorman, because he's been gracious enough to already have provided a donation that actually allowed us to pay for that speaker in November that's coming to speak on eating disorders. And actually, one other thing I want to mention that I think is important is we have what are called FCI's, Facilities Collaborative Inquiry, that are specific to responsive classroom. And so I provided a training for, we have two responsive classroom trainers in every elementary school and at the ABCC, and I trained all of them. And we're working as a team throughout this year. And we're working right now on developing the plan and the rollout with the goal being that in every single elementary school in the ABCC, that we will have responsive classroom practices and things like morning meeting done every single day in every single classroom. So that will be professional development. We'll be providing for the rest of the teachers around what that looks like, which talks about, helps with behavior, talks about teacher language, teacher leadership styles. And so that's something that's really like system-wide programming at the elementary level that I think is going to have a big impact on creating the kind of safe and supportive environments that will help kids to feel less anxious and transition back into school this year. And that's it.
Awesome. Very nice. Thank you. Before we, I'm sure the committee will have some questions, but before we do, I just want to say, it was actually part of my report, so thank you for queuing it up. November 17th, from 6:30 to 8:00 is when the Parent Resources are doing the Eating Disorders, the Silent Epidemic, and that's virtual. But I did see some, well, that was really weird. You're like, have this funny delay and you just said yes and didn't move. But that is a virtual thing and I don't know if they need to sign up, but I did see a flyer and I think there was a link for that coming up. So mark your calendars for the 17th.
Isn't that the night that Ethan just said was transition night?
Well, you're right, because I actually have a note on that as well. I was going to talk about that because I think we need to be really mindful of the calendar because that is eighth grade move-up night. At least two of us here have daughters in eighth grade who will be moving up.
And a bunch of high school kids are there to help with that, right?
Right. And so that's definitely an impact. And I think we need to, again, be really mindful of calendar and planning for those as well, so.
One thing, because, you know, it's so difficult with the calendars, everyone knows. There's so many events and there's so many great things happening in the district. But one thing, just so you know, that we did do is he's going to be taping it and then it's going to be available to anybody at any time. And we'll have that taping up on the website as well. So if they're not able to attend that evening, anybody can watch it afterwards.
That's great. Thank you.
That's rare. It seems like they aren't willing to do that, so that's outstanding.
So there's a couple of things with that, two things that are great. Lisa was at the PTO President's this morning. So we were able to connect her not only, you know, she works closely with us, but with all the PTO Presidents so that they can get her contact. And now she'll be sending them flyers too, to put in their blasts. And the calendar piece is important too, you know, there's just not all the dates for certain things like this. The Naprin was only able to do it. There are some events where you have people come in, like in the past, we've had someone like Chris Haren. His, it's proprietary, it is copyrighted, you know, you can't film it, send it out, disseminate it. And then we have other events where, you know, we can tape it. And I think that's the, kind of the coolest part about it. With some of the more local folks that are willing to do that is awesome.
Great. All right. So I'll see if there's questions from the committee. We'll start virtually. Ms. Picard.
Yeah, thank you, Nikki. I've listened to you so many times and I've had the privilege to sit with you on, you know, a couple of committees. And I'm always learning something and I'm always impressed. So I want to thank you for that. For one thing, I took a whole bunch of notes, but I love that we are pervasively at every level. Anybody who is student-facing in North End of Republic Schools is part of this. And I think that's just so important, whether it's the classroom teacher. I'm so glad that it's not just happening over there, like where the guidance counselors are or where those kids who need to take care of their social, emotional learning, right? Like we all do. My older son said to me today, like, why do we have to keep learning all these relationship things where we have to learn how to treat each other and how to talk to each other and how to behave? So I'm thankful for that. I love that you're doing what's internal, how we're thinking and feeling about ourselves as well as what's external and relational. All that said, it would be really helpful to me to know who the SEL team is. You know, some sort of an org chart or a Venn diagram or something that shows me how these are connecting with each other. I know we have three additional counselors, but I don't know exactly, you know, I don't think those are guidance counselors, academic counselors. I think they're doing things like group work and one-on-one work or, you know, more clinical kind of stuff. So I'd love some clarity on that. I don't expect that you need to answer all these. I'm just going to throw out all my thoughts. It would be great to have a place where I could look for more information on something like the NAMN Project or the QPR. And I also want to compliment North End of Republic Schools for doing so much with parent engagement. We know the impact of parental self-efficacy and parental expectations on student achievement. We learned that from Dr. Mealy in his dissertation and we're seeing it happening. I'm not sure about the fundraising. I'd love to understand that more, like why we need to do fundraising. Is it just for the speakers for Naprin or is there something else? And if there's anything we, as a school committee who vote on budgets, should be considering in our budgets in the future to support that. So, thank you.
Sure. Just to answer the fundraising question, because that's the easiest one. It is just for, it is just for the speakers for Naprin. But we also are looking for always and find speakers that are willing to come for free, especially around mental health topics, because a lot of clinicians, you know, it's in their nature. They don't even think about the money. It's in their nature to say, "I want to come. I want to help schools. I know schools are struggling with this and I want to, and I know parents are struggling and don't know what to do at home." For example, this speaker is a clinical director at Walden. I mean, he could command plenty of money and he was willing to do it for free. And he was also willing to come to a coffee and conversation afterwards, also for free, to speak in a more kind of informal setting and answer more questions. So we are paying him because we had, like I said, the generous funding from the Youth Center, from Rick Gorman. But, you know, we try to find people that are good and that are willing to speak for free, but that's what the fundraising piece is about, because we'd like to offer them something. I mean, they're spending their time, you know, with us, so.
Nikki, I would, oh, sorry. Can I add one thing, Nikki? Just, I think it's really important that, you know, in the past, the Speaker Series, when it was known as the Speaker Series in Naprin, had, used to get money from PTOs would be part of it. And they also get money from the district. So Lorene uses grants. I know Lorene's not here tonight, but, you know, she was able to, with Nikki, secure angst, you know, and the ability to show it. So there was some grant money there. But one of the challenges this year, and it's really good for us to get this up and running, is, you know, we're not, Naprin is not really looking at PTOs for support this year because we realize that PTOs themselves and their typical fundraising has been down. So, but it's been terrific of Lorene and Rick and some of these folks that have been coming in. So I just wanted to mention that.
Yes. Yeah. And I would just say, you know, this week on my Facebook memories are popping up points of wisdom that I gained from a Naprin speaker 10 years ago, Dr. Bradley. And today's memory was, a lot of what we're treating in adolescence is chronic sleep deprivation. So we know that parents and families and routines make a difference for kids. So, and those outside speakers make a difference to what we as parents are doing with our kids and how we can justify what we're doing. You know, when I'm asking my child to go to bed and I can say, "Well, I just went and saw this PhD guy and he told me that it's chronic sleep deprivation." Like, midnights aren't really a good sleep time. You know, it's great to have that. So thank you.
Ms. Witsky?
Yeah, Nikki, this is awesome.
Absolutely awesome. I have to think we're like one of the only ones in the area to do something this extensive. Dr. Gilligan, do you know that?
I think it's been our focus for some time and I think it's a challenge. I think you can always do more. But I think, I would agree with that.
I don't want to, I'm not patting myself on the back. I'm definitely patting the North End of Republic School System on the back and the leadership team and the school committee for supporting this work. But I can say with a little bit of authority that we are leading the way with a lot of this work because I'm part of a group that meets monthly of SEL Directors across the state and we report out to each other on what we're doing. And every month, it's always, wow, North Andover is doing so much. So we're getting a lot done in North Andover. Yes.
Yeah, that's evident because I've not heard of this in other towns. So that's awesome. Mike, I have a few questions. First one, on the universal screening, is that anonymous? Or can you flag kids that may have some serious concerns?
So universal screening is not anonymous. And so the way that, what, what happens usually is we do the youth risk behavior survey, as everyone knows, has been done for many, many years. That is anonymous. On that are several questions around depression, around suicide, around mental health in general. And that data is really important because it, when you see high numbers, for example, in some of those mental health areas, it definitely informs programming and allows us to say, okay, depression is a problem. What can we put in place? What can we bring, such as the NAM project, for example, to address that? However, what it doesn't help us do is on that granular micro level, really work with those kids because we don't know who those kids are that said, yes, I do think about suicide often, or yes, I am sad and feel hopeless more days than not. So, universal screening, the ones that we're doing, and it's grades five to 12, from grades five to eight, we're going to be doing what's called the GAD seven. That is a universal mental health screener that screens for kids that are struggling with anxiety. In grades nine to 12, we're doing the GAD seven and we're also doing what's called the PHQ nine, which screens for kids that are at risk for depression. I want to be clear that these are not diagnostic tools. We're not diagnosing mental health conditions. We're just getting data that will show us who is at risk for some of those issues. And because it's not anonymous, it allows us to directly look at that data and immediately intervene with that specific child. We partner with the parents. If they score high on those, the parents are called immediately. The guidance team meets immediately with the child. There's a whole process in place and we're actually administering those next week and the week after. We also did them last year. But that allows us to really target our interventions and make sure we don't have any stone unturned where we're not missing a kid that scores high. Does that make sense?
That's excellent. Yep. That answered my next question, but if parents are going to be notified.
Oh, yes.
And then, so this is really a question from Marcy, I guess, too. A large number of our special education students have anxiety. So, and we're doing so much for the general classroom and general population. Are we targeting those kids? Are we doing anything specific to target those as well in addition to all of this?
So the three counselors that, the three counselors that you referred to before are also like particularly at the high school, particularly at the high school is focused on special education. We do have our internal two elementary school programs, middle school programs, tier three programs, as well as the tier two programs and at the high school. We have been, you know, those have been pretty stable populations of students. But within those programs, again, are an additional, those don't take resources away from tier one and tier two because those are additional counselors in those programs as well.
Okay. And then I'm glad you brought up the attendance because I know that this is happening everywhere and I'm seeing a lot of it in my practice, a lot of school refusal because of depression and anxiety. Are we seeing an increase in that here?
Yes.
We are.
And so basically what I've done is, and I don't know if I already thanked Carol Larkum, but I have to because she's like the data guru and I would never be able to create any kind of dashboard of any kind without Kara's help. So I create, I get all the, the data together and she's the one that really works her magic to create a dashboard. I've always used S E L data management systems that were already created. So this is a first for me. So thank you to Kara. But basically what happens is we have, we had that chronic absenteeism data from last year. And yes, we expected last year, it's obviously a very unique year for the, for the data to be a little bit skewed in terms of there being really high numbers of chronic absenteeism and at-risk. And there were. What we're doing this year is every single month I generate a report for each school that looks at those kids that fall into those chronic absenteeism and the at-risk category and it shows their absences for that month. And then every month I meet with the principal and the counselor in the school and we develop a specific plan and protocol. Part of that, of course, is immediate reach out to parents, meeting with parents, having them come in, talking to the students, et cetera, depending on the age they are. But yes, we are seeing an increase in, in chronic absenteeism and we're seeing an increase in school refusal. And most of that is, is often due to anxiety and trauma.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just want to add to, I mean, through this, through the, not just the data information piece of it, but just through evaluations, just anecdotally, we've seen a pretty significant increase in the number of students who are found eligible for under the category of emotional disability too, so.
Ms. Patrow?
I actually don't know if I have any questions right now, but I just wanted to say like a gigantic thank you for all of this work. I mean, this is such a impressive, useful, valuable, multi-tiered, comprehensive system. I mean, you've hit everything that I could think of. I mean, as a teacher, we often know that students are struggling with social emotional issues, but we're like, okay, so what now? I know that there's a problem. So learning that there's PD being, you know, implemented and available to all the staff is awesome. The minding your mind, you know, strategies for in the classroom, I just, I'm just so, attendance, it's, and it's, you've hit everything. You've hit the teachers, the caregivers, the students. It's just, it's great. I don't know. I don't have questions yet because I'm still kind of processing and there was so much information, which is amazing. Like I said, you hit everything. And I don't know how much people realize like this is huge, like really, really huge. And we're very, very fortunate to have all of this being put into place. So thank you.
Thank you. Really an amazing team and a lot of support that I get. So it makes my job a lot easier because it's a lot. There's, there's a lot going on in the district and around, obviously the state and the country with, with social, emotional, mental health issues.
Well, I feel, I'm very excited because I think, I'm in my sixth year here and I think this was probably in my first year that it was decided to add this position, which was kind of on the cutting edge at the time. You know, who knew flash forward a couple of years what we'd be going through, right? That only exacerbates what was already happening. So I'm thrilled that you're here and this department is only growing and, and the professional development across the board has improved under Dr. Gilligan and then under Lorene Marks so much in the last six years. And then just to hear all this in this area as well is just tremendous. So I'm super grateful. My one question is around, I love that you talked about anxiety groups and for students and what have you. Do we have or have you identified any need for that for staff? Like are, are staff needing anxiety groups? Are we finding that they need support because of this past two years in particular?
Great question.
And-
I can actually-
Thank you. Nikki's frozen.
I know, because Nikki and I had spoken about it because last year first, there were quite a few opportunities that Nikki set up building based to meet with teachers on a one-to-one or group level. And it was well taken, well taken advantage of by staff. So it has been part of discussion. I don't know that she's gotten to it yet, but I know it was part of the end of, the end of the year last year.
It was the, absolutely the end of the year. Nikki did a great job and I think she's frozen. I'm not sure if she's unfrozen, but it's certainly something that we all-
It looks like they've all left.
Yeah.
Is Helen there? Let me just see if-
She's still in the meeting. They're still here in the meeting screen. Yeah.
Can they hear you, Jim?
They're laughing.
Okay. So they can hear us. That's all that matters.
They're laughing near you, Jim, not at you. Trust me.
Oh, here they come. Okay.
Oh, okay.
Oh, now they're back. Yeah, okay. We couldn't hear you guys. Sorry. It was gone.
So Nikki, we were talking about the work you did last spring seeing staff. It's something we're cognizant of. I think everybody in school districts everywhere, there's teacher shortages. There are all sorts of stressors because we're back, but we're also, again, kids are getting back into a routine, which is unfamiliar to, you know, particularly if you're a first grader or a second grader that they never really had. So, you know, it's, the teachers have been pretty amazing, you know, and this is something we need to continue to work on.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all. Thank you.
So I'll just make a couple of quick comments. I think most of the committee already said what I was thinking of saying, but, you know, the value that I think you bring with your team is just so invaluable to us. Just a huge thank you to all of you for, for the time and the attention that you put to this. I think it's so, so important. So my two real questions are, you know, hypothetically, right? You know, there's a parent who's, who's sitting at home right now, who's watching us, as I'm sure they all do, and says, you know, maybe there's like some information that I want to look at. I'm concerned about, you know, my son or my daughter, you know, is there a place, like where's the best place on the website? I'm wondering, can you direct us on the website to, to where some things are? And then if there is a, a concern that a parent has, I mean, I'm sure they will contact, you know, somebody clinical, whether it's a pediatrician or somebody else, but we know that it's difficult to get into some practices right now. Should they reach out to the school guidance? Should they, what's, what's their next phone call?
Before, before Nikki answers, I just want to let the room know that you guys are cutting in and out on us. From the start of Ms. Maybley's statements until the start of Mr. McDevitt's statements, you guys were out. And then midway through Mr. McDevitt's statements, you also went out. So I'm sure Nikki's going to do her best, but I just wanted to let the room know that in the community.
Thank you.
Excellent. Yeah, I'm going to answer this to the best of my ability, but, but please, Mr. McDevitt, tell me if I missed something because he did go in and out. So I believe you asked about where people could go, parents at home could go.
Yes.
We have a social emotional learning website and on the website, that's part of the North Andover Public Schools website, obviously. So you go to the S E L department. And on the website, there is an entire section of resources for families and it's actually separated out into different topic areas. So school refusal, anxiety, depression, trauma, substance abuse, pretty much any type of issue that a parent might be struggling with, grief and loss, and obviously some COVID resources as well. And there's many resources there that they could access. So that's the first thing I would say. The second thing I would say, I believe you asked if they wanted to reach out to someone in the school, who could they reach out to if they were concerned about their child? So they can always reach out to, we have an amazing S E L department of clinical counseling staff, pre-K to 12. They can always reach out to their counselor to start. Their counselors, obviously I supervise them. They work very closely with me on, on a daily basis. So I am always available to speak to any parent that is concerned about their child and to offer some consultation to them, to point them towards resources beyond what we offer within the school setting as well.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Such a valuable part, part of what we have here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nikki, thanks so much. You know, I'd be remiss just to say, you know, what a tremendous program. But we have a really tremendous team here and what people don't see behind the scenes sometimes is the work that Ms. Bakuzzi does with Ms. Murphy and Lorene Marks. And, you know, I feel fortunate to work in a district that we have people with these skills. And make no mistake about it, you know, I picked S E L this time. Sometimes we do MCAS this time of year and MCAS was half of a test this year, one session. And, you know, until we can get kids comfortable, that's when they will, when they're comfortable at school and they feel good about going to school, that's when they will access learning and scores go up. So these skills are just critical and, you know, we're going to have to continue at this for some time. I think that the COVID pandemic will be with us for a while. So we have to continue with this. So Nikki, thank you so much.
Thank you. And I just want to say a final thank you to the, to the committee for giving me the chance to present and share about, you know, the amazing work the S E L department does, but also to thank Dr. Gilligan and Marcy and Lorene and the whole leadership team because without their support of this work, I wouldn't be able to do what I'm doing. So thank you very much for supporting this work and prioritizing it in the district. I appreciate it very much.
Excellent.
All right. Thank you. All right. Dr. Gilligan next.
All right. Superintendent's report, I thought was going to be a, a quick one. This was the most important topic. So I thought that would take this amount of time and so I'm going to be quick here. With the MSBA update, MSBA stands for the Mass School Building Authority. And as folks know, and we'll talk a little bit further down about the school capacity projects that we're working on as part of Facilities Master Plan Two, we submitted statements of interest for different building projects here in North Andover at different schools. And we submitted one that drew the attention of the MSBA to the Kittredge School and to build a new Kittredge School. So this past week, we participated in a Zoom meeting with the MSBA that went really well. And today they came out to do what's called a senior study of the Kittredge School. So the MSBA came out with architects and engineers and got to tour the Kittredge School with myself, Chair McDevitt, the town manager, Dr. Mealy, Ms. Bakuzzi, Principal Cushing and Facilities Director Steve Foster, who works for us, to actually tour the school and see what the footprint is and see what the challenges are. And again, you know, this is probably the furthest we've made it since they came out to visit the middle school a few years back. So they came out, they took a lot of information. It was a terrific visit and they plan on letting us know either in December or in March. Hopefully, they're really hopeful about December, about whether we'll move forward in the program. This year, they had 58 schools apply for the core program. We were selected as one of 20 to do the conference call and then the site visit, the senior study. And, you know, we're hopeful that we move forward here in North Andover, so.
Did they indicate how many they pick out of the 20?
They didn't. And it really depends on the size of the projects and how much money they have.
Right.
So they'll, they'll evaluate the, what the greatest needs are. But what's terrific about this program with the MSBA is if you get a project that's funded, you know, it could be around 40% reimbursement or so, maybe a little bit more. And that would be free up a lot of money in North Andover, have us have other money to use. You know, like we want to tackle the middle school, you know, and it's, it's a challenge. So I don't know if Mr. McDevitt or Dr. Mealy want to say anything about the visit today.
I'll just say one quick thing, Mrs. Maybley. You know, I think a couple of years ago, there were at least two that I can remember, high schools that were being built. And, you know, when a high school is built, that is a significant amount of funds that they, that they do and that takes that. So I think the first two or three years that, that we were applying, you know, they were very upfront with, you know, hey, we've got these buildings and, you know, funds will be a lot more limited. So I think that that probably, I, I don't know of anybody else who, who's doing, you know, a massive construction with that. I'm sure there are some in the state, but, you know, that, that certainly takes a big piece of it. I actually was going to talk a little bit about this in the chair's report, but the virtual meeting I thought was very, very good. You know, just interesting to do it kind of here, kind of what we went through. They kind of get some, some good notes, good topics with all of that. And then as we walked around, you know, you could really tell that they were reflective on what we had talked about and some different things in terms of space and things of that nature. My youngest graduated, or was clopped out, I should say, of Kittredge three years ago. She's in eighth grade now. So the changes in that building since then are just absolutely huge. You know, the, the reconfiguration of rooms in order to fit space in, to service our students. If you have not been in that building, then I strongly encourage you and members of the community to come on the 25th when we have the forum. It is the 25th, right, Jim? I think it's the 25th.
Kittredge.
Monday. Monday, it's the 25th.
Yep.
To attend that and really see that building and some of the things that, that are happening in that building and some of the things that we really need in that building. They were very aware when we, and we were there when students were there, so we were not disruptive of students, but, you know, just walking through and trying to, you know, get to places where we do OTPT, right? So you have to go through the cafeteria, you know, you open up a door, you can't get to the building, you can't get up the stairs, but, you know, like you're right there on the edge of stairs and then you've got to kind of walk upstairs in order to get in there. And that's for PT and OT, you know, and like she just looked at me and she's like, really? And I was like, yeah, really. So I, I think that it was very, very impactful for them to be there.
That's excellent. It's actually nice that you were there and you actually had a history of kids going there. That's excellent that you could tell that story.
Mr. McDevitt was, I mean, I think Mr. Cushing has utilized every single spot possible.
Oh, my goodness.
Every single thing that was a storage closet, a closet, a former restroom, like it has all been turned into places to service kids. And as many people know, we used to say the ground level, but, you know, it's down almost like a basement, you know, the garden level, ground level. And more importantly- And more importantly, to Mr. McDevitt's point, you know, we're grandfathered in on a lot of things, ADA and stuff. But it's difficult to get up to the nurse's office with a couple steps. It's difficult with steps in different places. You know, there's a lift that goes downstairs to the first floor, but not up to the second. And we've had to make a lot of moves. So it's 71 years old, and 71 years ago, they just didn't build buildings to do this kind of work.
Can we have, on the 25th with the forum, is there a possibility of having like little mini tours if we have enough people show up? Because I know, like, we were just in the one room for Atkinson, but seeing is believing. Having a little tour might help, I don't know, spread awareness.
I think it would probably depend on how many people attend and the form of that. But, you know, I know I personally cannot attend, but Dr. Mealy, if you can work with Mr. Cushing.
Or maybe we can make video tours down the road or something? I don't know. If we can't do it otherwise, but yeah, I, that's, well, just what you just said, Mr. McDevitt, about going up this scary little crazy thing to get to OTPT, that's nuts, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I think that we're going to have supportive families here. I'm hoping that MSBA saw what we saw today and what we know. And, you know, Dr. Mealy's worked with them a little more closely over the years on some projects. But, you know, Dr. Mealy, you have anything you want to add?
I'm just knocking on wood and crossing fingers. I kept saying, kept saying during the tour that the building speaks for itself. It was obvious to, and I heard comments from our own crew about not realizing how starved for space we are. A great example of, you're not aware of this going on in the district, but we put the electrical service outside. And if you drive by Kittredge, you may have seen the work happening and you can see the green box outside. That was in a closet in the basement of Kittredge. And that space is now being used for speech. Because we have so much space, anytime there's an opportunity, we jump on it and create more space. But, you know, these projects are being proposed because it's not sufficient for what we need. And it's not just Kittredge. Our other elementary schools, Atkinson and Franklin, are the same way. And that's why we're working on these projects.
Yeah. And I would just say, you know, one of the things that was a little bit alarming even as we walked in, you know, if you had a child in a wheelchair, you can get a child into that building. There is a ramp that's there. We were standing in the lobby and they asked if there's a student in a wheelchair hypothetically and they need to go to the nurse, how do they do that? Well, the nurse's station is, office is two or three stairs up. And Mr. Cushing said, we would have to wheel them outside the building and bring them up in and through a classroom in order to get them into the nurse's office. And they said, okay, well, how do we get them to the library? And so there is a, there's a stair ramp lift, thank you for the term, that kind of guides them down the stairs. And he said, well, what about if you're on the second floor? And Mr. Cushing just very quickly said, we move the entire classroom. We have to move the classroom down a floor in order to do that. So, I mean, from an ADA perspective alone, I know, I understand that we're grandfathered at this point. But, I mean, that is just so, so alarming to see. You're 100% right. It does not make it right.
Yeah, and Mr. McDevitt, I think that's really important is, you know, in all the presentations. So I hope folks come, you know, we've been able to point out, we're not, you know, the ADA challenges at a lot of the different schools. But that was very powerful today for them to see from the MSBA.
Yep. And there was a former men's room that has been basically gutted and become a, I don't know, it's not guidance, I, it's, it's
That was reading.
It's a reading intervention room, correct? And the woman just turned and said, well, where does a man teach her? Go to the bathroom. And we said, well, it's a shared bathroom between men and women. And she just said, next. And we just kept going, so.
And so we've been talking about class size and everything for years in North Andover, and that's certainly been a challenge, right? But it's also about these appropriate spaces in all these schools. And again, 71 years old, you know, Atkinson's getting up there, you know, Franklin, they just weren't designed for these spaces. And the needs have changed, frankly. So.
And I can't imagine if we had the kindergarten in that building, another 50-plus students in that.
And we, you know, and we have in the past. The ABAC certainly, the investment in the ABAC allowed for us to create some more spaces. And it's still a challenge across the district. So knock on wood, I hope that we hear from them in December. Because that impacts, you know, it impacts our plans moving forward. All right, Dr. Mealy, the enrollment update.
All right, I'm going to present.
Well, Dr. Mealy's presenting that. I just wanted to mention, before we do the enrollment, we typically, most years historically, have had about 20 to 25 people do homeschooling each year. And last year was the first time, we went from about 25, and we almost doubled. We're up between 45 and 50. And we're in the same place again this year. And I just wanted to mention that beforehand.
Same place for 45 to 50?
Yes, yeah. We're still about double than what we've normally been. And when I talk to other superintendents, they've been reporting similar increases or more.
So this is kind of a preliminary look at our enrollment. Normally, we wait until the October 1 data has been certified by the state and then we do our projections for the next year. But just to, what I'm using is what has been submitted. It doesn't usually change too much. It might want to two students in a grade or so, but it doesn't change a lot. So we don't anticipate it being much different than what you're seeing here. You've seen this before. We go back to 1993, 94 school year with what we had in each grade then and have showed, we show the actual numbers for each year since. And the waterfall or descending color there just is when we're able to track a group, a cohort from kindergarten all the way to graduation. So you can see, for instance, that first class in kindergarten in 93, 94 had 333 students. And that was back when it was half-day kindergarten. So a lot of students went somewhere else. And that's why first grade was all the way up to 391. By the time it finished, it was 312, because that was back in the time when the move from eighth grade to ninth grade, we used to see quite a bit of students going somewhere else for high school. And you could see there, it went from 365 to 312. So those change over the years. And it's really interesting what's happened this year. If you look at our numbers, our actuals that we submitted to the state, you can see a high class of 380 graduated last year. And they were replaced with a kindergarten class of 290. So that's the variance you see of minus 70 in K to 12 students. But for those students that were here, that moved from kindergarten to first grade, first grade to second grade and so on, we did not see much change at all. We did see, we thought that some parents may have kept their students out of kindergarten last year. And it looks like that's the case because, as you can see right here, we had 289 students in kindergarten last year. And to start first grade this year, it's up to 322. That's 33 students more. Where in the past few years, since the implementation of full-day kindergarten, we've been seeing six, eight, maybe 10 increase from kindergarten to first grade. So we were probably right to think that some parents had held them out. But then when you go along the other grades, 327 first graders became 333 second graders. You can see some fluctuations, not much at all. And then the ones that we normally see big changes, fifth grade to sixth grade, we saw minus five students. That's a very low difference than normal. In high school, we're normally around 10% loss since probably 2009. 2009 was when we had the financial troubles. And a lot of parents decided they couldn't afford private school. And so they started having their students, the ones who had been going to private school, went to high school, went to our high school. After things got better, we did not see that go back to what it had been. So it's been about 10% since then. And you can see it was only 6% this past year. We lost 22 students from eighth grade to ninth grade. And so overall, because of preschool, that's the number on the far right, 4, 5, 8, 6 is up by 20 because we only had about half, if not even half of the students in the preschool last year that we normally have. And it's up to 160, which is as high as it's ever been. So overall, from preschool to 12th grade, we're up by 20. And then you can do a lot with these numbers, but one thing I was curious about, the column on the right here. I was just looking at the change from when we first got that cohort to when they finished. So they came in at kindergarten, so for instance, at the bottom here, the 52, that's the green. So they came in, 313 students came in at kindergarten and 365 are what we ended up with. And we're seeing in the last nine years, an average of 46 student increase from what we get in kindergarten to what we have when those students graduate, which I thought was interesting.
Yeah, and I think it's important to note that we've had free full-day kindergarten for quite some time.
Well, I highlighted 2014, 2015 there.
Right after Dr. Gilligan, mine, and at the time Zora Warren's children all.
Finished, right?
Yeah, it was the next year, so.
Mine too.
Yes, yours too, yeah.
So what I would ask is, when we do get the October 1 number certified, is there something else that you'd like to see besides the normal projections we do?
I just think it's interesting. So you had mentioned that, you know, this year I understand why there's a big jump from K to 1, but it looks like there was a bigger jump last year.
So actually, it's diagonal. So the 289 became 322. And you can see the year before, 322 became 327. Yeah, so they were averaging about, like I said, six, maybe eight. Yep.
It's a high enrollment for pre-K anyways.
That's really high. Yeah.
So the one thing that I think really about this is, and that last column is actually cut off in our packet.
Oh, actually, it's not cut off. I was, like I said, I play around with this. It occurred to me, that seems interesting, so I added it.
Okay, so that was just the fun column for you?
Yep.
Okay, all right, cool. So it looks, I think you said last nine years, we're averaging 46 more students per grade. And a couple of slides later, we're going to talk about school capacity. And that's saying 35 or 36, so.
I was thinking that as well, yeah.
Right, from one year to the next, total number of students in the district is 30 to 35. This is what, and that's kind of factored into the 35, but this is what happens. So when somebody sees a class of 290, they say, wow, it looks like it's really low. But what we end up with is, you know, during the course of that cohort's move through the district, it increases and ends up about 46 more students than that. But that's not connected with the total number of students in the district.
This is tied to a class's evolution.
Correct.
A class of 2022.
Okay, okay.
Absolutely.
And when Jim gets to the school capacity, that's talking about the space, the two, the space studies done, growth studies, and it will, it's looking about 35 additional students a year.
Right, I remember that number. And when you had just brought that up too, I was thinking, wait. But that makes sense that it's from here to here. But does that still need to be factored in? Or is it already, is it like, it's in the formula? That's, okay.
Yep. So they look at birth rates, they look at developments, they look at class additions and subtractions over the course of time. They look at all those factors.
Mr. McDevitt?
I was just going to ask for questions.
Yeah, my only question I have, and I agree, this is really interesting data. And I continue to be interested year after year and learn more about this. But the one question I have is, do we currently have a waitlist for preschool?
It's a good question. We did, up until COVID and coming out, I'd have to check. I can find out from Mary Lou if there's a waitlist, because there has been in the past, certainly.
And as you said, I mean, that's about as high a number as I see here, what we have this year. So did we have increased capacity? So that's an interesting number I'd like to know a little bit more about. Thank you.
Sure.
I can tell you, just part of it is that we've had a, have seen understandably from COVID, a pretty significant increase of numbers of students coming in from early intervention. So there's going to definitely be an increase of students with disability, disabilities at the preschool level because they kept them in EI for an additional year. So they weren't here last year. That's part of it.
And we've certainly had a waitlist over the years. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's a big building.
And the number of students, or the number of spaces available for typically developing students is a direct correlation to the number of special education students we serve?
Correct.
Thank you.
Preschool for the, integrated preschool.
Other questions for Dr. Mealy? I think we hit you with a bunch as we.
I always think this is super interesting, so. And it's not playing out like there was panic that people were fleeing schools. And this certainly doesn't seem to be playing out here, at least.
All right. So typically in the superintendent's report, I usually have Cheryl Barzac go first. But I thought it would segue nicely into the chair's report. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Barzac just for an update on the numbers, the vaccine clinics, and, you know, where we are in terms of vaccination rate, et cetera. So the director, Cheryl Barzac, please.
Hi, thank you, Dr. Gilligan. So two weeks ago when I was here, I was happy to present that we had eight active cases of COVID in the school district for our students and staff. Today, we're back up again in the 20s. We have 23 active cases. We had a big increase over the last week. A lot of families, spread with parents and their children, spread through the families. We have a lot of, well, we have 23 active cases. We're continuing with symptomatic testing. That's also increased. Last week, we were doing about maybe five, two weeks ago, 10. But this week, we had like almost 40 symptomatic tests. So there are kids that have colds or a sore throat. And we have had now two or three positive of symptomatic tests. But again, that's still 40 other children that were able to stay in school. And we continue with the test and stay for close contacts. And again, I'm just happy to report that we can keep more and more students in school for that. It is trickier as the cold season is here now, as well as allergies. But we're just trying to stick with the guidelines that, you know, if there's more than one symptom, they really need to be tested. But if it's just one symptom, they can come to school. And, you know, we're just continuing to move forward with that. For vaccines, the vaccine for three to 11-year-olds, FDA's meeting next Tuesday, the 26th, their advisory committee. And in anticipation of that moving forward, doctors or pediatrician offices were asked to start placing orders. And shipments for the vaccine will be sent to pediatricians' offices as well as pharmacies and clinics. So we should be up and ready to go with that vaccine once we have FDA clearance. The vaccine clinic at the high school, we had seven students. And at the middle school, 15 students. So that's, that's what attended those clinics. Our rates at the high school for staff and students vaccinated is 77.5%. So we're not at the 80% yet. And the only other thing I was going to mention, when Nikki was talking about screenings, the nurses are also able to start screenings now. That, it was waived last year, there are requirements. But now the waiver's no longer there. We're required now to start back with all vision, hearing, the expert screening at the high school. So that's all starting now. And so we are screening students again. And that's what I have for an update. Any questions?
We'll start virtually again. Ms. Picard?
Yeah, the question I have, Nurse Barzac, thank you so much. As always, very thorough. Last year, we kept hearing that we were not seeing a lot of strep throat. We were not seeing a lot of ear infections. We were not seeing a lot of, you know, regular childhood illnesses. Are you, in your nurse's office, seeing? Are you, in your nurse's office, seeing, you know, a significant increase in all those things over last year? And are you, like, I know you track the number of visits and all that jazz.
I don't have those specific numbers, I'll get them for next time, but we are not seeing strep throat, and we haven't seen flu yet. So again, the same mitigation strategies for COVID are working for those. So those numbers are still down, and I think when I talked with Dr. Chan, he said the same thing, so.
And is there a meeting of the health advisory committee coming up?
No, but I will schedule one.
Thank you, I know you've been busy, I just wanted to make sure you weren't missing anything.
We have a task force that we meet every single week, and so I thought that was sort of taking the place of that. But I will, I think that's a great idea. Thank you very much, and I will get one scheduled over the next month.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt.
Ms. Vitsky?
No questions? Thank you, as always, for the update.
I don't have any questions either, thank you. I imagine the nurses and your staff are going to be even extra busy as we get into the screenings in addition to the COVID protocols, so good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, I know we kept you here way later than probably you had envisioned, and I'm sorry for that, but thank you for that. So you said 77.5% at North Anniver High School for vaccinations, and that's students and staff?
Yes.
Okay, and then you, and actually, this had come up, I think, from public comment and other places, but I know you've been researching, and there are some kids who get vaccines elsewhere, and if they're not in the Massachusetts system, they report that in to you all, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, and we asked to get more of that, that's why the number increased by 27 from the last time I was, two weeks ago when I reported to you, because we put in those names of the students that were not in Massachusetts or that, sometimes they're in the system with the wrong birth date or name spelled differently, so we did as many corrections as we could.
That's excellent, thank you.
I do have a quick question.
Yep.
With the, is it the three or the five to 11-year-old vaccine potentially coming out in the next couple of weeks, do you anticipate having clinics in the schools?
Yes, I would invite Greater Lawrence Family Health Center to do the same thing that they did. I think with this age group, though, parents usually want to be there. I like the idea that pediatricians' offices are going to be offering it. I think that's a very comfortable place for families to have younger children vaccinated.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering if it was even going to be on the table, because they're that much younger.
I think as many opportunities that we can provide to families to make it easier for them to get the vaccine would be great.
Absolutely, yep, I agree, thank you.
A couple of quick things. One, the 23 cases that you mentioned that we currently have, are you able to share breakthrough cases or unvaccinated?
So most are unvaccinated on the dashboard, because most of them are elementary.
Okay.
Only one is in the high school, three in the middle school, all the rest are elementary.
Okay, alright, thank you. And I would just like to say, I don't remember exactly when it was, but there is that COVID hotline, and I happen to personally know a guy who got up early in the morning and said, let me try to find that number, and was, I didn't say who I was, but called, kind of relayed my symptoms, or not my symptoms, the symptoms of my child, to a familiar voice on the phone. Again, didn't identify myself, and it was very reassuring and very, it was what we anticipated the response was going to be, that my child was fine to go to school. But it was just so great to know that I could pick up the phone and have somebody able to answer. It was even better that it was you. So I felt a lot more comfortable with it and was negative as well. But I just think it's so great that you are continuing to do that, and what a resource that that is for families to have that voice, who kind of says, yep, it's okay, they can, these are the circumstances, they can still go, so, thank you. Publicly, thank you.
Thank you, and I, the person that normally does that on-call line has been out for three weeks, so I have been taking that call line from 6:00 to 8:00 a.m., and it's actually helped me, because there are at least five to 10 calls, and on Mondays, usually 15 calls. So I'm able to speak with parents, and I can see what their questions are, and hopefully, you know, put that information on our website, or get it out to the nurses, that, you know, this is what parents are asking. And I think it's great that our parents care so much about doing the right thing and making the right decision. So it's been a good learning experience for me to be on that line.
Awesome, thank you, alright. So I would invite you, you're welcome to leave, but I would invite you to stay. As part of the chair's report, we're going to talk about the DESI mask mandate.
Sure.
And hopefully, we can kind of gain some thoughts or some insight to you. So anything else from you, Dr. Gilligan?
No, I'm going to end the superintendent's report, I thought I'd end a bit earlier, but I'm going to turn it over to the chair.
Alright, perfect, okay. So there is nothing to vote on, this is a conversation that I wanted to have with us, and I think there's some questions in terms of where we stand and what our thoughts are regarding the mask mandate kind of moving forward. So as it stands today, and Dr. Millie, Dr. Gilligan, correct me if I say anything wrong, until November 1st, there is a mask mandate for all students. There is potential that that would get extended coming up.
Yeah, so November 1st was the day it was extended to. The roadmap offered an opportunity to start reporting and looking to off-road on mid-month of October. I believe it was the 15th.
15th, yep. The other thing is, if a school, not a district, a school reaches 80%, then the local board has the ability to say whether or not that school would be requiring masks for vaccinated students. Is that still correct?
DEFC has been very clear, it's a local decision. And just as an example, to the best of my knowledge, there are two high schools currently in the Commonwealth that have hit the 80% mark, but they're still in masks.
Okay, perfect, okay. So we reported tonight that we are 77.5%. So if my math is correct, and your math, I'm sorry?
At the high school.
At the high school, correct, at the high school, 77.5% at the high school. Then that is 40 students, 41 students, I guess, probably pushes us over the top of that. Students, faculty, and staff, correct?
That's the number, I'd confirm it with Cheryl, but that's the number we have now, yes.
Okay, so I think one of the questions that Mrs. Mabley asked was, for students who may have been vaccinated out of state, they would need to report that information into the nurse's office in order to be included in that updates.
If they haven't already.
If that hasn't already been done, okay. So I just wanted to, somewhat of an open conversation. Again, there is nothing to vote on at this point, because we have not hit the 80%, but we are 40, 41 students away, and that day is perhaps coming with some more shots in the arms. So I'm just curious what your thoughts are kind of moving forward with that, and I'll kind of, I don't wish to call on anyone, I will just kind of open it for some dialogue.
And before you stop, Mr. McDevitt, I just asked Cheryl. Cheryl, so, you know, for the new vaccinations to be considered fully vaccinated, could you just go through that process, the timeline? You know, so if I was unvaccinated getting a shot today?
So like the students that had it on October 13th, their next one will be November 3rd, and then one week later, they will be considered fully vaccinated.
And they are not included?
Oh, two weeks later, sorry, y'all.
They are not included in this 40, because they are, the 77.5% represents fully vaccinated, is that correct?
So I have one correction on this chart, is in, seven students that were vaccinated at the high school are actually in this number. So I would have to pull out seven.
Okay.
But I just wanted to point out, I think, is it roughly about a month from first shot to full, being considered fully vaccinated?
Yes.
Five weeks, yeah, okay. Thoughts on the possibility of moving forward?
I feel like 40 is a lot. You know, so I feel like this might be a little premature, because we don't know if we'll get 40. We only had seven at the clinic.
It could be that the conversation inspires.
So I'll jump in the pool. There are a couple of factors here for me, and I'm just offering my thoughts at the moment. The fact that there are, there is a vaccine for the younger kids out in the breeze coming soon is helpful, because having, you know, hit the 80% at the high school is great. Personally, I think that I would be comfortable with that going forward, if we hit the 80% to try at the high school to not mandate the mask for those who are vaccinated. Couple of problems that I wrestle with, one is, you know, I only have a high school kid left. So I don't have smaller kids at home or a grandmother living with me who, you know, might be a problem. So I know for some families, that would be a concern if the kids take the mask off and somebody else, they collect, you know, get COVID, what have you, so there's that. The other thing I massively struggle with is, I don't think it's right that we make the teachers have to police all of this. I don't know if there's a plan or a suggestion in place, or if we would need to come up with something like that, but I don't think it's appropriate for teachers to have to have quiet conversations on the side and say, you know, Ted, you need to, you know, put on your mask, you're not vaccinated, and try to have a quiet, to do that respectfully. They're supposed to be teaching, they're not supposed to be doing that. I think there are going to be tons of kids who are fully vaccinated, and if we said, you don't have to wear a mask, they're going to wear them anyway, and that should be okay too. I see people, I live, you know, on Main Street, I see people walking their dog on Main Street, totally alone, wearing a mask. So there are people who are going to do that. So those are the things that I worry about, but I also keep coming back to the fact that last April, right after April vacation, we went from six feet to three feet. That was pretty scary, right, like all of a sudden, we're moving closer, and just after vacation, people traveled everywhere, all kinds of things went on, and so I was like, oh, you know, we're going to see a huge spike, and that didn't happen. So these trials seem like we need to try them, is kind of, so that, I know I'm probably not making much sense, but these are all the things that are swimming in my head that I think go into how we do this. And then also, looking at the protocols, we would have to, someone would have to fill out, it would have to be Cheryl or Greg, or Brian LaGrasse, to sign off and send to DESI this document before we could even have the conversation, am I understanding that? So that stuff would have to happen as well, so I put that out there for your thoughts.
Yeah, I'm kind of with you on like the, how do we, how do we enforce that? I don't know, that's not the right word, but, you know, for lack of a better word at this time at night, like, how do we make this equitable, and how do we not put this on teachers, and then not make, you know, the learning environment a little more stressful because of, you know, who, how do we, how do we determine that a child is vaccinated or not, right? Because of the, I don't know how that would work. I don't know if there's something you can put in School Brains as like a little asterisk next to their name, or, sorry, not School Brains, Power School, that notifies the teachers in their attendance or in their rosters, but I don't, I don't know, I don't know if that's equitable or not.
To be really clear, talking about SEL earlier, either way, you know, whether there's a change or there's no change, or we meet a threshold, and then locally, we change a policy. We don't want to stigmatize any kids, period, end of story.
Exactly, that's exactly it, right.
The SEL and their well-being is number one. And number two, you know, it's been a challenging year for teachers all across America. You know, it's been a challenging year for everyone, but, you know, one of the, you know, the keys is, you know, people, you read articles every day, the research, you know, it's not about giving yoga once a week, or a pizza party, or a jeans day, I mean, one of the challenges across is like, I look at districts implementing new curriculums, or trying to do, you know, I saw one locally doing Eureka Math, implementing it. Putting more demands on, and teachers on a topic like this is hard, and we, you know, they've got to teach. I will say, we've thought about it, we've talked about it. There's only two districts that have qualified so far, and to my knowledge, no one really has a plan. I can tell you, at the colleges I've been to, events, and I'm not saying this is our solution in the least bit, I think it's going to be a real challenge, and I think we'll have to see what the state continues to come out with. But I've been to a couple of events at colleges where I've had to wear a wristband, and, you know, I think that that would be a real challenge, you know, at young ages, and we don't want any more social emotional stress, stigmatizing anyone because of their choice, either way, if it came to that.
And I would, and I would, I would not put a lot of stake in DESI giving us a lot of guidance, because their pattern, behavior patterns, they have, or, you know, historically, they have not. They've not given a lot of structure and guidance and strategies on what to do, so that's, it's concerning.
I think the reason why I wanted to bring this up now, and I appreciate Mrs. Vitsky's comment of, you know, it may be a little bit early, it's five weeks. So, you know, if we had, for example, you know, 40 students who got shots in the arms this week, you know, we'd be talking probably somewhere in that Thanksgiving time, coming back from Thanksgiving recess, before that would be possible. But knowing those numbers are getting close, I think it's time that we really start to have those conversations. And one of the things that I was thinking about is, if this vaccine becomes available to students that are under 12, I wonder how many students who might have a younger sibling would then do that together with them, right? So maybe, you know, not all children are vaccinated in the family, and, you know, they say, well, we'll all get it kind of together. And I don't know if that's enough to get us 40, 41, whatever that number is. But I do think we should start to have some additional conversation about it. And I always try to be mindful of Ms. Picard, who's virtual, but questions or thoughts, you don't pop up on the screen all the time.
Yes, Mr. McDevitt, I've just learned that it's automatic. So whoever the last person who spoke is will stay on the screen until the last person speaks. So I take advantage of that whenever possible, and I will try to make sure that Cheryl speaks after I do. I, the couple of thoughts that I have, one is with regard to a parent comment a few weeks ago on natural immunity. I don't think the DESI guidelines takes any sort of natural immunity into consideration, and I don't know if we would have any data on that. I mean, do people report, I tested positive for COVID and I recovered, and do we know how long they may be immune, and are they immune from other variants? We see that there's a new variant, you know, in the UK now, the Delta 1+, or whatever it is. So if you could talk a little bit about natural immunity and how that information might be collected, even though it is not part of the threshold that DESI is suggesting?
So when someone is tested positive for COVID, they're not considered a close contact in school for three months. So that's the timeframe that they use when someone has had COVID, and they're in the system even. So there are no guidelines from DESI about masks coming off for people that were positive.
So when you say they're not a close contact for three months, we're sort of saying that they have natural immunity for three months?
Correct.
And do we have the scientific data that supports that that's accurate?
I would imagine in the DESI protocols, there's probably articles about that.
Okay, thank you. And then in follow-up to Ms. Mabley's question about the change from six foot to three foot, I don't think that was a blind trial, I think there was data that supported making that change, it wasn't arbitrary. I think that we were talking about the change from understanding it as a droplet only to an aerosol as well. So can you talk a little bit about that DESI guideline change from six foot to three foot?
Right, so that was the change that was made last year, and that was based on all of the data that they had collected, as well as studies, I think there were three studies that throughout the country that were published. I think there were three studies that throughout the country that were published to support that. And again, because of all the mitigation strategies, in schools, it could be three feet. Outside of school, it's still six feet, you know, for less than fifteen minutes, or more than fifteen minutes. But in the school environment, because there are multiple layers of mitigation strategies, there was, like as in North Andover, we had very little school spread. And so that's where they came up with the, the three feet for schools.
Thank you. And the current cases that we have, are those school spread or not school spread, to the best of our knowledge?
So far, just, we've had only one person from the test and stay. So it was a student that was considered a close contact at lunch at a school. And on day seven, that's the number of days we test, seven, that student was positive. So we consider that an in-school spread. I mean, it could have been something at home. She was symptomatic, but it was probably, you know, from that, probably. But I, you know, I'm not sure, but yes, we've had one out of all of our test and stay students, one hundred and twenty-two, we had one. So I, I think that that's, you know, those are people that were in, were less than three feet, so, or they were eating lunch, you know, without a mask. So I, I think in school is, is, seems to be a pretty safe place, or a place that doesn't seem to spread.
Because of the mitigation strategies?
Because of all the strategies, yes. I mean, you have teachers watching, you have masks. We are going through so many masks. That's one thing that I, I would love to get out to the public, and I think principals will be sending letters as well. We're going through so many masks. The high schoolers are just walking into the school, going to the main office, asking for a mask. And students at recess, they're losing them, dropping them. But anyway, so, yes.
Is that different from last year?
Yes. I think last year, people had multiple masks, they had them in their backpack, they just had more masks. And this year, they just don't have them as much.
Okay, so there have been some sociological changes.
Well, I think there's more places where they don't have to wear them outside of school. And so they're maybe just not as accustomed to having so many on hand.
Okay, I think that's really helpful. And now I would turn my questions to Dr. Gilligan. Again, following up on, on some of the concerns about teachers needing to police the mask situation, or enforce, or whatever the, the language is. We have in our mask policy that if a student is not compliant with the mask mandate in schools, that the teacher can contact the principal, and the principal will, will contact the, the family, et cetera. I'm wondering, are we having a lot of mask refusal issues in the North Andover Public Schools at this time?
I think, not mask refusal, I think we've run into more reminders sometimes, mask slip. I think we're much more, we're moving around a lot more. It's a lot, I think there was a lot of restricted movement last year. Like, like, you know, the mask I'm wearing. If I was outside at recess where I don't have to wear a mask playing touch football, or kickball, or something, the chance of me breaking this is probably pretty good. You know, just putting it down in my pocket, and then pulling it back out, and the string breaks, something along those lines, so.
But we are not currently experiencing it as a significant discipline issue?
No, I think it's more reminders here and there.
And, and I'm really glad to hear that. But that just informs me in understanding what we have now is working. And, you know, as Mr. McDevitt said, I mean, five weeks is only a couple of school committee meetings. So, thank you. It's just information gathering at this moment. I'm done.
All right. Any other thoughts or questions? We're, we're not voting on anything today, but, you know, as, as we said, it's five weeks, and that's a possibility. All right. All right. The only, I, I had a number of things that were kind of taken in the rest of the meeting from, from different presentations that went in. I do want to report, we had executive session earlier today regarding the North Andover Custodial Association. We approved their contract, five to nothing. The custodians approved it unanimously, I believe, earlier today? Correct? Yesterday, okay. Some highlights for that, you know, longevity was increased to be more consistent with some of the other contracts that we have within the district. Sick days were increased from, I think it was three to five days. And from a financial impact, they are at two percent. Again, consistent with the rest of the district contracts that are there as well. So, Dr. Millie, any, anything other highlights you would want to put out there?
I don't think so, I think that's the key highlights.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I, I think it was you and Helen who participated in that negotiation. And always kind of fun to, to negotiate and, and meet different people in different conversations, specifically around money. That contract, I assume, once signed, will be posted on our website underneath the contracts.
Correct, so first the MOA will be, and then we will incorporate that, those language changes into the contract, get that signed, and then that will be posted.
Yep, perfect, awesome. So, thank you very much, and congratulations to the custodians on that. And then I was going to kind of say this when Ethan was there, but his presentation was so awesome, I didn't want to detract from it. But just a, a quick congratulations to the North Andover Girls Cross Country Team, who since the inception in nineteen seventy-five, had their very first undefeated season. So I think that that's, that's quite remarkable. So, congratulations, all right. And, Dr. Millie, we're going to go to the school capacity project here.
Yeah, so this is a, a standing item in our agenda for the, for the year. I would just say that we have conducted two of the eight scheduled public forums. Mr. McDevitt attended the one at Franklin Tuesday night with, along with Ms. Picard. And Pam and Ms. Picard attended the Monday night one at Atkinson. They haven't been really well attended, but those who have been attending have been very engaged in asking good questions. I think Holly would like to, would be encouraged by the fact that we said the same thing she said earlier, which we've been identifying the need for these projects as, one of the big things is to get us up to code and ADA requirement. And while we're grandfathered, we've been saying that's not a good thing. So you took the words right out of our mouths. And we've been getting some really good questions. I, I think it's important for people to understand that we've been very inclusive, as much as we possibly can of the community and staff throughout the process, and that's not going to stop. And so during the design process, we will be soliciting input. A couple of the questions that have come up, because of COVID, we've seen a, a, an increase in the use of outdoor space. So why don't we incorporate that into the, the design of our schools? And then somebody was talking about making sure we have internet capacity in our buildings. And why don't we connect that to, if we're increasing outdoor space, make sure it can be accessed outside as well? So some really good questions have been coming up, and like I've been telling people, they will be included during the design process, and, and so keep those coming. But we've got two more next week. We've got Kittredge on Monday night, and we've got the middle school on Tuesday night. And then you've seen the schedule that's out there, so they're going to continue. And they have been, they're available to watch, all of them are on YouTube through CAM.
That's great.
And they, they, they get posted the next day. I, I will say, though, if you've attended one, they're going to be the same pretty much each night. We are kind of focusing on the location we're at for that project, kind of putting that up front and talking more about that. But the overall presentation is the same, so if you've been to one, you're covered. The purpose of these is to make sure that people know what the projects are, what we're looking to do, and get their questions. And so we can incorporate their questions into our presentations, but also answer them as best we can. The focus of these is that, coming out of the holidays, we'll be focused on the timeline and the funding for those projects. So January through March, leading up to the warrant creation for the Maytown meeting, that will be the focus of our, our public meetings, just so people know what's going on.
Since you were in attendance, Ms. Petrowski, any thoughts, questions, any feedback you want to? I'm putting you on the spot here.
No, 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 it's okay. No, I, I, I do wish that there had been more people there. But I'm, I'm glad to hear that there are some good questions that the last one, too, and, and the, thinking about the outdoor space. My, that's just started my brain, just like, thinking of all these ideas, like, yeah, yeah. I didn't think of that, and I'm so glad someone else did, and internet capacity and all of that. So it sounds like we're getting some good feedback. I don't know, I just, I just wish more people were there, and, and, and I hope that people, if they can't go, can go back and watch so that everybody, you have to be informed. So, that's all.
Perfect. Ms. Picard, you attended both of them, anything you want to share?
I just, like Dr. Millie said, I thought it was really interesting that there were different mixes of people. There were a great number of teachers at the Atkinson event, and they asked some really great teacher questions. And there were more parents at the Franklin event, and they asked really great parent questions. So I think it'll be interesting. I think Dr. Millie particularly is going to learn from going to all of them, where all these different ideas are coming from, so that we can really do a bang-up job. So I thought, I thought they were great. Like Dr. Millie said, the, the folks who did attend were very engaged, and I think very helpful to the process.
Awesome. So I'll, I'll just add a couple of quick things. I mean, they are, they are forms to get people aware and understanding of kind of what's going on, what's happening in terms of the timeline. You know, we're not designing, we're not approving a design, you know, we, we are making the recommendations to Master Facilities Plan Committee Two, in terms of how we move forward with that. So I think, you know, even though attendance may be a little bit low, and, and sometimes, you know, that, that does happen, I think it's getting more people who are involved, and, you know, hopefully, they, they tell a friend, and they're able to do that, and they're able to attend a, another forum on another date that might be convenient for them. All of the forum dates are listed on the North Andover Public Schools webpage. And, and it's all right there in the school capacity section, as well as all of the documentation that's there as well. I do think and anticipate that the middle school one will probably be one of the larger ones, because I think it impacts so many people within the town, and, and that is Tuesday night. So that's great. But it is not just schools that are impacted by this as well, of course, right? So we've got Fire Station Number Two, and the North Andover Youth Center, right across the street from each other. And, you know, those are certainly, you know, very well-deserving projects that are there. And, you know, I think it's always a good reminder that, you know, we're finishing Facilities Master Plan One, right? And we've done some amazing things, including the building that we're sitting in right now as part of that. And so this is kind of the next wave to continue. So always great. And, and I think the, the, the parents who attended the Franklin School, I thought they asked, you know, just really fantastic questions in terms of just, you know, have you thought about this? What's the process? What's the timeline? And, you know, as we talked about earlier with the Massachusetts School Building Association, you know, there is a variable that's there. And if Kittredge is approved, then the shuffling of dates and things of that will certainly be dictated by that as well. So, you know, it would be great if we had every single answer, and we don't. We are planning, and we are moving forward, and this will be, I would say, the most impactful thing we have done in not one generation, but, but a couple of generations in North Andover for the education of our students. So, thank you, and please attend the, the sessions as you're able to do so. And again, reminder, when those forum, forum dates are, are all on the website as well, so. Anything else, Dr. Gilligan?
I couldn't have said it better myself.
Okay, perfect, all right, thank you. There is no old business, and Dr. Millie, if you perhaps want to bring us home with the new business of the first reading of the capital plan as submitted and presented in the packet?
I'd love to. And it's a good segue from that discussion, because the first item, really, we would have in our capital improvement submittal, these projects, but because they're part of Facilities Master Plan, it's a town-wide initiative, and it doesn't have to be in the school's submittal. So that's why we have the asterisk there, school projects. And we have the note at the bottom that that includes Atkinson, Franklin, Kittredge, Middle School, and AB-ECC additions, renovations. So people may have noticed in the past that we have had items in for Franklin Elementary Sprinkler System, Atkinson Sprinkler, Franklin Roof, I mean, I'm sorry, Atkinson Roof. But they came out because it didn't make sense to do those if we're going to be doing these as major projects. And that's why they don't appear anymore. But what does appear are the annual projects that we do now. District-wide paving, we're going to continue with that. We finished the high school this past summer. District-wide drainage issues, we did do some more work at the high school while we were doing the paving, which made sense. And Franklin as well. The district-wide exterior maintenance renovation, if you recall, when we took down the arch that had, was starting to deteriorate at Thompson, that's what paid for that. That's the kind of work we do there. And then annually, we put two hundred thousand into maintaining our IT infrastructure. You see an orange, a new item. I have asked a consultant to do an assessment of our district for security with regards to access of the buildings using FOB access, so we can monitor it better and control it better. Camera coverage, interior and exterior. We can certainly do a better job, our, our system's kind of old for the elementary school entrances. We've updated them a little bit, but that could be better. But recently, we've seen where the Kittredge playground equipment had peanut butter smeared all over it. And we're seeing an increase in kind of incidence on our property that we should be able to monitor better. So they're going to do an assessment of the district and, and kind of give us a menu of things that they think we could do. And so I have it as a placeholder right now. I talked to the new fire chief, Chief Ware. They are, want, they want to make sure that we have a Plan B and C for communication during emergencies, particularly if power goes out. So we're working on that as well, and we're going to combine the two. We've talked to the town manager, and we'll figure out where to put it as far as how much and in what year. So that's why that's in there right now, and we'll get more information as we go. That's it.
Questions for Dr. Millie? Ms. Picard?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions. These numbers are all quite consistent. You know, two hundred thousand dollars for paving every year, and then five hundred thousand dollars total, two hundred thousand dollars for IT. I wonder what the breakdown is for, for the IT? What are we doing with that, two hundred thousand dollars? And a cap of five hundred thousand dollars for some reason? Is there a different number that we should be considering or thinking about? Or how does this continuity is good? Help me understand it.
Well, and that's, it's, it's just, it's funny that it is that way. It hasn't been in the past, because, for instance, last year, we did the Atkinson floor, because we couldn't wait on that. That was asbestos tile that was breaking up and had to be replaced. And so there was an amount in there for that. There was an amount in there for the middle school performance center floor, which was just finished. That ended up, we had two hundred and, I think, seventy-five thousand dollars in there for that, but it ended up getting mostly covered by insurance, so that was good. So basically, because we've pulled out the school projects, it's just our annual maintenance projects that are left. Now, you might see in the future, as, as we get closer to having to replace the track again, or replace the turf fields, things like that might come up, and they'll change the numbers. But for instance, IT, IT is, is based on a percentage of our asset. How much annually should you be spending on that asset? If it's a two million dollar asset, then two hundred thousand dollars. And that, it used to be a hundred, if you recall, but we added to it, and, and so the two hundred made sense. And we've seen, what it's allowed us to do is that two hundred thousand covers the annual maintenance that we require, and then we're able to use it for other IT needs that present themselves. The, and the same with the district paving, if you recall, we actually had a, a single amount in there. in there for the whole district when we had the assessments done, but we found we couldn't do it all at once, and so we've done it annually. And at some point, that 200,000 will fall down to what's it cost just to maintain that? But this is a replacement over the next few years, and that's how much we can do each year. In the district-wide drainage issues, we might find that 50,000 is more than we need as we go, so it's a number that we have trialed to see how it works, and so far, it's worked pretty well, but we'll adjust them as we go as well.
That's really helpful. And then, you know, as a follow-up, I do wonder if you can remind me how it is that we report out on these completed projects, and, you know, how much of this we've expended, and, you know, how much we were able to use for other things? You know, for example, you know, insurance did pay that, so then where did that earmarked money go? So, you know, just remind me how you report out on that, and what we do with funds that are not necessarily expended.
Yeah, so we do a operating budget report, but we really don't do a capital report, and Dr. Gilligan mentioned this to me earlier, and I said, well, it just makes sense that we should do a, at least at the end of the summer, because that's when most of those funds are spent, we can do a report out on the capital accounts.
I think that would be helpful, you know, be helpful. I know we're, you know, we get the warrants, and we, you know, we read all the expenditures before we can sign the warrants, but then it's hard to go back and see where each one of these was earmarked, and what's applied to the CIP, and what's applied to, you know, other things. So I'll look forward to seeing that, and I think that as a community, we can celebrate a lot of the great projects that we do. You know, I know that there were some concerns that were raised about, like, the high school bathrooms last year, and I know they were addressed over the summer. So I think that would help us, both as a committee and as a community. Thank you. I'm done. Mr. McDevitt.
So can I just do one clarification regarding the middle school performance center floor? Because we didn't use that money, these funds are absolutely project-specific, and they're not, sometimes the town will pay through free cash, sometimes it'll borrow, but if the funds aren't used, all that means is that money goes back to be available for other capital projects in the coming years, or for debt capacity for the town.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Ms. Vitsky?
No questions.
Ms. Petrowski?
So I just have a quick question. You said that you're working, you're going to work with a consultant for the security analysis. Will that include some ALICE protocols or safety measures being put in place? Because I know, like, this is the time of year where everybody's practicing ALICE, and I think they're changing the name. But I know it's some of the older buildings, especially if there's, you know, a barricade moment or whatever, protocol or need, sometimes the doors aren't efficient with, you know, there's no locks, or, you know, the doors don't close correctly, and I know that there's a lot of different things out there right now to quickly install at the top of the door to actually make it, you know, closed and locked and not able to get through. So I didn't know if something like that was be, if ALICE protocols would be included in that consultant, and have we had any conversations about, you know, nobody wants to think about it or talk about it, but it is, it's a real concern, and with things that happen in our day and age, we need to make sure that our students are as safe as possible.
Right. And so I have asked them to do the complete menu of all aspects, and they have included meetings with the principals at the schools to discuss their ability to respond or inability to respond as appropriate. So yes, that is included.
Okay. Yeah, and like, and also with like the software communication, right? I know there's a lot of things out there right now that you can, that we can, that are available for communication during, like, if there was an ALICE situation, but I don't think we have any here, so.
We have some.
We do?
The police can access to see.
We actually meet with the police pretty regularly on this, and
Sure, yeah.
Actually, even most recently with our new staff that comes in, so we have new staff, Lieutenant Folds, that we have to do a lot of training.
Yep.
But we work with them and meet on an annual basis, and we've looked at a lot of the different apps and different things. The security audit will be really good, but it's at the forefront of our mind.
Yeah, it's just a sort of peace of mind, you know, for parents and teachers alike, right? Especially if you've got the kids in the room, and you're trying to barricade, and like, the door still opens after you've barricaded, that's not okay.
Right. We've even asked for what's the new technology in allowing you to, you know, properly barricade that door without moving a file cabinet in front of it.
That's what I'm saying. Like, I've seen a whole bunch of things, especially after things happen, that they'll all pop up on your feeds everywhere, right? But there's like a locking system that you can just, that can be installed, and it's like two seconds, it's locked, and then you go under the desk or whatever, like, whatever the protocol is.
Exactly.
But it would be really reassuring, I think, for a lot of people if we could look into adding that to the list of what we're going to add.
Yep. And one that does come to mind, you were talking, Be Safe, we participate with, the police can bring up the building and have an idea of exactly, you know, the whole layout of the building as they're coming up to it if they need to.
A couple of years ago, I was in a district that was using CopSync, and it was accidentally alerted, and I will tell you that it works. So we all, like, evacuated quickly, and within the time it took us to get from our classrooms outside, which was maybe a minute, there were police cars, like, running through, and we were traumatized and running with our hands up. But it worked. So it was good, at least, to know that it worked, but those kind of things in place are, anyway, I'll stop, sorry.
Yeah, I think it's really important that this is ongoing work we do, particularly with the police. So I'm excited for it, Jim, to go through it, and...
Yeah, like I said, Chief Ware is working on that end of, you know, the communication part during emergencies, and I'm meeting with the consultants next Wednesday to get their report.
Thank you.
So that leads to my question, which is, this orange part obviously is empty right now. Do you think you'll have that before we have to vote on this, or are we going to vote on it without that and add that later?
So I'll be meeting with them, and then I'll be speaking with the town manager and Chief Ware, and we should have something in there.
And before, that's excellent. Thank you.
Before the vote.
Okay.
They'll include, obviously, Chief Gray and EJ as well.
Yeah, I'm just calling out Chief Ware because it's tied right to this initiative.
Completely.
Yep.
All right. So I'll now ask for public comments. Nobody here? Anything else from the committee?
Going around?
I can't? Sure. I was looking for nods or something, so...
I have some.
No, no, it's perfect. Ms. Picard?
Yeah, I just want to thank the custodians for the work that they did in the contract negotiations. It was a pleasure to work with them, and I know we've thanked everybody over and over again during COVID, but these folks have done, you know, brilliant and helpful work that have allowed us to keep kids learning, so I'm appreciative of that. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Vitsky?
Yeah, so a couple of members, longtime members, former chairs of the CPAC many years ago, their kids have graduated out of it, and once, I don't know if you guys know how this works, but after age 22, there's no school program, so you can be educated up to 22, and then there's nothing after that. So these leaders in town have organized what's called the North Andover Social Club, and what they do is they create or organize social and recreational activities for those young adults, you know, from 18 to 35. You don't have to wait till you're 22. And they do things like bowling or different events, just, it's a network for them to get together that they don't have because they're no longer in school around their peers. A lot of the adult programs, you know, will do education-related activities, but not social activities, so that's what they created this for. So if anybody is interested, I believe there's information probably on the CPAC site.
Yes, yeah, they have it on the special education. Under special education on the website, too.
On our website, and then you can also email northandoversocialclub@gmail.com for more information. And then my next announcement is a great event on the nights on the run, and she will never tell you this, but Amy Mabley and her family were there at like 7:00 AM volunteering, and were instrumental in putting it on, and they did a great job, so
Very fun.
Thank you for that.
Ms. Petrowski?
I don't have anything. I talked a lot today.
Means you're getting comfortable.
Yeah. So I actually have three things. One is, we already talked about, we had our second meeting with the PTO presidents so far this school year. Second one, partially in person, partially with people on the TUNY computer, because we don't have this technology on the regular day. And I just wanted to give a shout out, that some of them are repeat, returning PTO presidents, and some are new, and they're just doing amazing things. They're, you know, they got through last year, not a lot of fundraising, as has been mentioned before, but worked really hard to keep building community and keeping people together, making opportunities to engage with kids at all grade levels, particularly elementary and middle school that does this, because the high school has so many clubs and so many other things that are doing this work. But I just wanted to shout out the fact that they are really creating new ideas and new ways to build community and to fundraise, but they're very aware of not burdening families who are dealing with a lot right now, maybe financially or otherwise. So just impressive group, and I wanted to thank them. I'm honored to still attend those meetings. Secondly, Anthony, I should have remembered to ask Ethan about this, but Anthony Sideri did speak to the whole school who wasn't taking the SAT, so, the other day during the advisory, and I've seen him at least three times give his talk he used to give to the seniors during senior week. I'm sad that my daughter didn't get that as a 2020 graduate, but that's okay. But for years, I've been asking, can you please present that to the younger grades? By the time they're seniors, they've missed a big window of influence that he has. And I have a ninth grader, and she and her friends talked about it a lot, and they're, and some of the parents of these kids said that they talked with their kids about it. He was amazing, and so I really want to applaud the team, the students against destructive decisions, I think, is their group, for bringing Anthony to talk to the school already, and so I'm thrilled with that, and I hope that that presentation to the younger groups continues. And then lastly, Holly brought up the NAAA, so I enjoyed being part of that, and I just had my first experience with the NESA event that we put on in North Andover for years. My husband has attended with my daughter, but I'd never been, and I volunteered at that. But what I want to call out for those two organizations, and I know there, it's true for the boosters, it's true for other things as well, for NASA, for soccer, there are so many parents and kids who have graduated who come back and volunteer and run these things. I mean, there are people who, like, left years and years ago, who are still coming to volunteer at these, and so that is a huge testament to, I think, our district, but our community as well. And I just wanted to say I'm really thankful to them for doing that, so, that's it.
Very well said. I actually was going to speak a little bit about Anthony as well, and, you know, just say, you know, again, he cuts my hair if I can get an appointment, but, you know, the courage that I think it takes to get up and, you know, say how, what happened to him and how things were, and, you know, certainly applaud him for that. And, you know, as I talked with one of my sons, he said, I knew some of it, like, but I didn't know all of it. And, you know, it's, you hear about things that happen to other people in other towns, and here's somebody that I think, you know, so many people know and relate to, and, you know, it's so impactful. So I think I've spoken way more than enough tonight, but I would just like to really thank the committee for the mass conversation that we had tonight. I think, you know, it's really important dialogue that we start having. I think we're going to start to have a lot more dialogue as that October, I'm sorry, November one date starts coming down, and people saying, like, where are we and what's happening? And, you know, we've started some of that, right? We're not there from a number perspective, but we're moving in that direction. So thank you for that little bit of open forum here with that. So with that being said, if somebody were so inclined, I might take a motion to adjourn for the evening. It looks like it's about 9:44. Is there a motion that anybody?
I'm home.
You're already home. Is there a second to that, Ms. Petrowski? Any discussion? Seeing none, I will do a roll call vote. Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Vitsky?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Mabley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We are adjourned until November 3rd.
Which is a Wednesday.
Correct, and it is a Wednesday evening, so we are adjourned until Wednesday the 3rd. Thank you.